Okay, this is the February 1st workshop for the city of Bonnie Lake. Looks like that we're calling the meeting of order. And it is a joint city council workshop and planning commission meeting at this time. Matt Clark, will you go ahead and roll?
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Kleinman.
Present.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
We also have a role call for the planning commission also tonight. Planning Commission Chair Grant Sullivan.
Here.
Planning Commission Vice Chair Dennis Strauss Roy.
He is on line.
Here.
Commissioner Jessica Bennet.
Here.
Commissioner Brad Dahl.
Here.
Commissioner Craig Sarver. Commissioner Kerry Hughesman. And Commissioner Todd Dahl.
Here.
All right, we have some agenda items. We have an agenda modification to separate the planning commission, the council open discussion, and moving the council open discussions, the items F, and moving the rest of the items after that average down. Is there a motion?
No move. Second.
Okay, all approved?
Aye.
Any extensions? Any... all opposed? Okay, that is... that motion is granted. Okay, we will now administer the oath of office. Councilmember appoint Angela Baldwin. Say it again.
Can you just stand here and face this way?
Oh, am I facing this way?
Face this way. Keep this. Okay. There we go. Hold up your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Angela Baldwin.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the...
Do solemnly swear that I will support the...
Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
Perform and discharge the duties.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations, and you can go ahead and take your seat.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I've always been curious at the days when they hold everybody in the seats as we had had this. Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Evans.
It is now official. It's been 22 months since we've had all seven if mayor in room.
My goodness.
It's a big day.
Yeah, that's a big day. A good day. All right, moving on to review the council minutes. Councilmember Watson, Fullerton, and Clark.
Found a couple of mistake corrections that have been submitted.
Okay.
One word I'd like to put to the record, the Craig Sarver.
Okay, we do recognize that Craig Sarver says Dean President. It, Councilmember Fullerton, Deputy Mayor Carter, do you have anything to say?
I have a favor to say.
Okay, good. All right, moving on to planning commission open discussion. We have any? Yeah, I was gonna say, follow on planning commissions whose hands are raised and acknowledged, but I see no hands. Well, okay, we will move on. Yeah, we do.
Yeah, I didn't doubt there was any. Unless I had any open discussion. If we had any comments for them, or they... because they don't have any. It's gonna be a very short meeting if you guys are...
I think they're waiting for Jason to do the presentation on the items and then discussion afterwards for those items.
Because if there, you know, I... one thing that, you know, I may for the open discussion.
Yeah.
Planning Commission, I know there's a big issue floating around out there where we've seen the state legislature trying to basically take over the single-family zoning issue in Washington, right? So, please be cognizant of that issue because, you know, I don't see any way around that. So, I suspect that in the future, the state legislature will be, whatever they call it, they call it picking up zoning or whatever their hatching has. So, in, you know, that would cause the end of single-family zoning. They could do nothing. So, anything that we can do to maintain the character of our neighborhoods in a way that people want it to be, because there are clearly neighborhoods for multi-family and single-family and commercial establishments and so forth. But to merely, you know, eliminate the prohibition on building a duplex, or a, what they have now lined up is building fourplexes within half-mile圈子 distillies, that could radically change some neighborhoods and not in a big way in my mind. I'm sure we'll run through that and maybe that, you know, Jason probably, when he talks about housing, that might be something.
We weren't gonna weigh in on that issue. I'm waiting to see what actually comes out of the legislature. There's about four bills right now that deal with single-family zoning and housing types, and they're somewhere in the Senate, somewhere in the House. They're... they're not out of committee yet, so we don't even know if they're gonna make it to a Florida Bay. But there are, and they have different approaches. Some of them even have language at Trump's local CCNRs, some of them don't. So, we weren't gonna weigh into that in this because I don't have a clear...
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, and it's not related to the housing action. That's not related to the housing action plan. That's just a separate legislative item that is working its way through the state legislature, and if approved by the legislature and signed by the governor, we'll know in March, I guess, so.
Then we will have to secede from the state of Washington. It is totally unacceptable to eliminate. You know, getting my perspective for it because I see that as a huge issue in the future. There's the people in the legislature that thinks it's okay to let people walk out of Home Depot with a lot of goods, and they think that's okay. You know, they're of that philosophy, right? So, that's what, in my mind, I'm really worried about, is that they're going to do that in Washington, or do so.
Yeah, and once we have better direction, once you have, like, signed legislation, we'll be able to give that kind of, this is what's going to happen.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just telling you right now that I literally will refuse. I'm just like, I know you are not in the position because, you know, you're the policy that, and you have to do what you need to do.
We have, Mr. Sarver, I believe we have a comment. Mr. Sarver, or Craig, I don't know.
Sarver, sir. As Jason, as Jason is aware, I've been warning about this issue for the last year and a half or so, and I am of the same opinion that once the legislature gets this to the governor's desk, who will sign it forthwith, the argument is over. The other point I would make is this is not being pushed by the state legislature. This is being pushed by the Democrats in Washington DC and some of the Republicans as well under their housing initiatives. And fourplexes will be the least of the problems because they will be dictating who can build, who can live, what kind of buildings you can have, and who can live there, as well as low-income housing, low-income tenants have to be accepted, et cetera, et cetera. So, this is, this is a train that has left the station, and it's gonna be pulled in pretty soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, recognize that Councilmember Kleinman.
Maybe this is a case where we wanna consider becoming a single-family thing.
All right, do we have any further discussion from either the council or the planning commission? Okay, Chair recognizes Deputy Mayor Parker. Is there an opportunity at this point, as these things are being debated at the state level or whatnot, for discussion for you guys or for us basically to put forth our thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, this is going forward, right? Yeah, we've been working with AWC on a number of legislative items that have been coming out and providing comments on it. If, if the council's so inclined and, and the mayor directs me to do so, we can definitely draft up a comment letter that would be, that we could give to AWC that they would put into the legislative process. So, yeah, I mean, that's not off the, that's not off the table. We've done that before on other proposed legislations.
Seems like that would be something that would be wise to, you know, at least get our comments in. I assume. I certainly agree with Watson. Okay, any further discussion on the issue before we hand the floor over to Mr. Sarver?
Would we need a motion to do that, to have a letter drawn up or something?
We do not. We have our city administrator shaking his head.
Oh, I thought we were asking for a motion to let Jason start.
Oh, I see. We would need some direction from the council. Okay. Uh, yes.
Jason, these are still in their respective committees, right? Nothing's gone across.
I believe one is in the Senate and one is in the House. They're slightly different, and they haven't made it out of their committee deadline, which I believe is next couple of days.
Yeah.
I got the third week legislative update. I could send that out to the city council. That was a good PCRC, which is a part of the organization that we believe now is a lobbyist that lobbies on behalf of cities in Pierce County. And they have, they give us a weekly legislative update. I've been for it enough administration, but I can forward that to the city council, and it'll tell you exactly as of this week where the bills are and when the cut updates are.
Right, we're in a short session, non-budget.
Correct.
So, yeah, we've only got a couple of days left, and if they haven't even picked out of their own committee, they have made it to their own foray, let alone cross to the other legislative branch before.
I think, yeah, I think it's by the end of the week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's February 4th for non-budgetary bills, but one of them has grant funding to it, so I think it's a budgetary bill, so it'll be pushed to the 7th, I believe.
Thank you.
No, I do appreciate the update, Mr. Sarver. Okay, so, any further discussion on this issue? All right, now, Mr. Sullivan, you can make your presentation. All right.
Just let me know. Uh, this one, work plan.
Hold on, Jason. I have to share the screen.
Okay. Didn't mean to mess your check. I'm learning.
Clear.
All right, so for our new council members, we do adopt a work plan for the planning commission every year. It was a, and the last time we did it was in 2021, and it's a biennial work plan, so this is just modifications to that existing. So, some of the quick background, Resolution 2899 established, 2889 established the requirement to adopt a work plan for the planning commission. The city council wanted to make sure that they were well-coordinated, and the planning commission was well-coordinated together on the work that they would be doing over that period. In 2017, we passed Resolution 2735, which adopted our first two-year work plan. Before that, we had did it in one-year increments. The reason we moved to a two-year was so that we could better combine what the planning commission worked, was working on with the biennial budget, because what we were finding is sometimes there was work the planning commission was wanting to, or the city council was wanting the planning commission to do, which required consultant cost, and trying to figure out how to merge those with budget issues, so we moved to the biennial work plan. 2889 adopted the current planning commission work plan for the years of 2021 through 2022. The draft resolution will modify the current work plan by adding some additional tasks to it that have come up over the last year. So, just quick background, one of the ones that was on the last, on the work plan that's been completed was the housing action plan, which was adopted by the city council in June. That did not require us to do any work, identified strategy for us to consider over the next 10 years. We completed our complete streets ordinance. We did start the East Town Countywide Manufacturing Industrial Center designation process by doing the zoning changes for East Town to focus on industrial and light manufacturing, and we're starting to see the fruits of that out there. The second part was going through the countywide designation process, and because our growth out there is not as far along as we had hoped, we're still a little short on the number of jobs out there. We need to have 1,000 jobs out there. We're about 500, so we're probably gonna have to wait to the next cycle of the plan, which will be in 2024. We only got part of the development code amendments done this year. We did the 2021 zoning map amendment. Because of some staffing issues, we didn't get the development code other part done. Those will just roll into this year's development code amendments. The Midtown Countywide Center designation that was on there was just to get, a part of Midtown identified as a countywide growth center similar to what we did as a downtown. If anyone has questions, please try to stop me.
Then I would stop you for a minute. I do have a question. You were saying that the town has been developed, there's a hope at this time. Do you know any of the primary reasons?
Chris Leir's development agreement for his project, this is not, was not, didn't move as fast as we thought it would be when we wrote this back in 20, late, mid-2019. We thought we would be further along with that project than we were. I think that was the biggest one. We thought that out of Wittenburg over at East Town Industrial Park was gonna have a second phase that could go really quickly, which would add some jobs. So, those were, I think, the two big ones that have kind of slowed the march of progress. They're still in the, operate, still being worked on. They just didn't occur as fast as, as we want. We know demand is there. We feel called all the time. People are looking at trying to do projects out in East Town. So, that was, that was, that was one of the big ones. As part of that, and I corrected mentioned when we were doing the development code amendments, one thing that we kind of wanted to just get the councils read on tonight was currently is, right now, when we did the East Town, we left mini-storage Jan as a permitted use. We have six mini-storage facilities in the city currently right now. We have two under-permitting and probably five more waiting in the wings. We didn't know if the council wanted to relook at that as a permitted use or not, so if there's any strong feeling one way or the other, please let me know. We can kind of roll that into the development government for this year.
Remind me of our previous discussion on that. Talking about it. I thought that one part was in or out or not.
It's always been in, but there was a concern because it eats up a lot of...
Yeah, yeah.
It eats up a lot of usable land.
What, you mean there's not a lot of jobs, especially for the minis?
No.
You sure? No, I heard they did a lot of retail out of that little office. So, the jobs in that. And the police probably.
Those types of jobs, legitimate family wage jobs, probably not. So, yeah, mini-storage doesn't produce a lot of jobs, a lot of tax revenue. There is some property tax, making land versus building. It was a discussion, I think, Councilmember Kleinman's or Councilmember Evans brought it up, and we're talking about East Town, I can't remember. But we kind of at that point just left it in, but then, since then, or maybe it was being Councilmember Swatman, I don't remember.
There's one more.
We had a more.
I, since I have been, we had a more term, it wasn't taken out. We did restrict it down to two zones. We took it out of Midtown. But now the question is, with six, two on the way, and possibly five more, we want to revisit. We don't make a decision just whether we want to revisit it or not.
Well, I would think so. We want to keep them to a limit, you know?
You can either have them or not have them.
At this point, yeah, we could, we would wanna, yeah, I'm saying that we want to have the car, we don't have the conversation, I just, I'm just looking for a head nod, like, do you want me to add that so we can bring it back as a discussion?
Yeah, with a green hat or are you interested in the topic?
They, I will tell you, they would probably not be. Because it makes...
Not supportive of the...
Well, no, of having mini-storage, because it makes a lot of money for the property owner, very little return on this.
Correct.
Right, oh, yeah, they're my nature for the first few months.
So, we'll, we'll just add that and bring it back, and then we can have that discussion.
Sorry, did you want to...
Sorry about that. I forgot to mention that. I just kinda shoeharded in on your comment. I took that opportunity. The first real big change in the plan is we are adding action plan implement project. This was based on a grant that we submitted earlier this year, based on specific council direction. We actually talked to the planning commission, we talked to CDC, and at council workshop to identify specific projects in the half that the council felt that we could move forward with. The first one was CIPA code regulation of it to kind of streamline the CIPA code to kind of make that not as burdensome as it currently is, work on some more ADU regulations. And then one that we just kind of, we didn't have a good title for, so we just called it the Housing Availability Diversity and Affordability Project, that the items that were specifically called out in there were those task sheet items that the council specifically reviewed back in November, which is streamline the design review process, open, open space requirements, infrastructure requirements, and parking standards. It doesn't change where uses are permitted, doesn't change density, doesn't change what uses are allowed in what zones. It's those kind of items that were on that spreadsheet.
Yeah, I think you did a great job in comparing those parts to the main. Thank you. Is that an ADU? Does, I have a question about that. Was that, I think I seen something there.
Yeah, that was what's in current statute.
Was there... By, is that like, is it deep in the roof or something?
It was put in by a former, it was put in by a former planning. It was a specific amendment that they put, a former planning.
Oh. What is that? Okay. That's regaling.
That's regaling.
So, that's mother-in-law, uh, home house. You have any view that's inside of an existing?
Yeah, you can have it inside of an existing structure, or you can have it as a detached structure.
And alone structure or something.
That's what the system was complaining about here a few weeks ago. How simple the ADU, which really isn't.
Yeah, yeah, so if somebody has a two-story house, you know, they can't make the top of it, they need...
It would only be if it's a detached ADU, so like...
Oh, the regulation that they keep putting on a detached.
Yeah, and we put it in, it was put in there as a specific amendment by a former planning commissioner. We all finding some challenge with that with detached garage, people wanting to put, like, mother-in-law apartments above detached garages.
And wouldn't there be an amendment to add an additional parking space to that?
Yeah.
The other question I have, which is, and you were stating that something needs to be done to make it less burdensome. That be the council's purty or...
Yeah, all of this, all of these are ordinances that have to come back to the city council to be approved. So, I have a classic story when it comes to CIPA. Sorry, I got a tickle in the back of my throat all this time. The CIPA, the original CIPA rules were raised in 1976, before the invitation of the Growth Management Act, before critical areas codes, before a lot of the environmental regulations that are just now built into the process. Our CIPA rules have not kept pace with those standards. And so, a lot of times, we're doing duplicative reviews, so when someone wants to add a garage or a small addition to their house, because they're in a critical area, they have to go all the way back through a CIPA review process when the critical area code is already sufficiently mitigating them. So, it's trying to streamline the process, so we only do that heightened level of environmental review when there's not other mitigation measures or steps. But the ordinance that does the changes would go back to the city council to pull.
Yeah, because our planning commission doesn't actually pass, say, later.
Yes.
On that, and hopefully when they're doing those...
I apologize.
Yeah, I'm thinking hopefully, you know, for, from my perspective, the planning commission keeps, when Jason's been all this changing, that we keep in the back of our head, I'd love for us to be as consistent with other jurisdictions. Because I have kind of this thing about wanting a builder not to really know that they're building in Bonnie Lake as much as they're just building a proper building, right? They don't need to know that, oh, man, I gotta go to Bonnie Lake, I gotta do all this. Well, I need to go, it's just another jurisdiction that has regulation. We don't want to be the one out there that's making it really alter, you know, doing things a little different than somebody else. Why should be different to the one? Okay, thanks.
Okay. Well, where are we on the full board?
So, if there's no more discussion on this, we can just kind of move on to the next one. So, the other thing that we added was an update to the community facilities element amendments. There's two here. One is we have to have a six-year CIP. Currently, the six-year CIP goes from, was adopted as part of the last biennial budget, and we now need to roll it out, so we cover the 23 to 28. The first two years of the CIP is identical to what's in whatever the council's budget is, and then the last four years are kind of planned projects that would then get incorporated, maybe be incorporated when we do the CIP, and it has to be financially balanced from year one through year. And then the last one is, we've had a little bit of issue with the way we've been doing our transportation impact fees. There's just some confusion between the way the Calib's written, the way the state laws are written, so we need to create a table in our, specifically to identify how tips are collected and which projects we're collecting.
And we're doing TLAs as transportation impact.
That is correct, transportation impact fees.
Okay. Is that the entirety of IBD?
I think there's one more, and this is, I think, the big, there's two more, sorry. This is one of the big ones. We have a proposal in here to do a new parks, trails, and master open space plan for the city to identify cost financing. The completion date would probably not be till 2023. There's a couple of reasons for this. One is, we're no longer certified by the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, RCO, so we can't get funds from them. Our plan certification lacks. We need a new plan. It would address Allen York, an Allen York Park conversion issue, which is discussed in great detail in this report. I won't go into it. The Midtown Park Plan, Victor Falls Plan, future trail alignment, we would have public and park commission engagement. Our thought would be initially to reallocate the money that's currently in the budget for the Midtown Park Master Plan funds to begin this process. It probably wouldn't be enough to get us all the way to the end. We might have to look at breaking it into two phases and doing some budget requests to support the second kind of completion in 2023, but it at least gets us out the gate and started. One thing to note, one of the bills that is in the legislature is a proposal to allow citizens to do a point zero, a point one percent sales tax increase to fresh parks. Don't know if it's gonna make it out, but that's a park funding option that is coming out, possibly out.
And, I'm sorry, but us not being certified by the RCO, why aren't we certified, or what happened? Did we just lapse on?
You just lapsed. They only certify plans for so many years. I think it's seven years, and we didn't want to update the plan, and we didn't have our growth targets, because then you'd have to go and do a supplemental update, because you want to have new growth targets. So, our plan lapsed. We knew it was gonna collapse, but now we're gonna have our growth targets discussion, and then we need to do a new plan, get that, the recreation certification off, so they can recertify us and apply to the beds. It was just, they're only good for so many years before they require you to do an update.
Is that, does that is Allen York Park A? Is that... Watson's in pain. The conversion thing there, how many, what do you think, pieces? Isn't that cell tower piece? Is that...
It's, it's actually about 67,000 square feet.
But is it kind of an opinion thing, where somebody was like, oh, you're using that for a cell tower, so you...
It's, it's, it's RCO enforcing our 1972 agreement with RCO. So, what happened is, we got RCO funds in 1972 to purchase Allen York Park. They required it to only meet with our purposes. They have very specific... If they required it to only meet our purposes, they have very specific definitions. So the areas that are kind of part of this conversion issue are the, uh, big. Part of the, is the decamp facility, the cell phone towers and the back of the public works. Those are all areas that we're not using for park purposes. Violating our nineteen seventy-two. Yeah. So that's just something we have to work through with, 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 with R C O. They're not yelling at us and screaming at us, but that and the certification issues are going to impact our brand. Hours.
Damn.
I know. We, we were well, we were all shocked when we got the letter. We did a lot of research and realized they kind of have to do something. We've got some solutions, I think. It's, we can, we can deal with it as part of the party. Possibly.
Yeah, I know.
Fifty years, they went back on the microphones to find that.
Yeah, and they had to mail it to us and everything. It was all, all. Well, I think the big thing for council, for looking at the council, is this something that they want to consider because it is not funding implication?
Yes, we're.
No, just, I, I, I don't know if yes or no, but at least like, is it off the table? Because the idea was the amendments to the work plan will come back to planning council.
Next week. The rolling funding might be an issue.
Well, I, I guess I don't understand. Is it, is there some work there that?
Walk in the car lot not being able to afford it.
Yeah, there you go.
Once in a while, are we worth, are we going to take the drive?
Well, the, the, this project would have, the outcome of this project would be threefold. One, you would have a plan for all the parks. You would have, you would have a cost for what those projects are going to cost and a funding plan for it. So it answers all three questions.
So how does that answer the?
So like, like deal, we would be coming back with, here's what the, so here is, if the city wants to build ball fields, your cost is S. If you wanted to do trails and informal gathering areas, your cost is Y. Based on that, then we know kind of we can get cost estimates for all of those projects. From that, then we look at updating our park impact fees and see how much that's going to contribute to the system because we're way undercharging our park impact fees. That's a policy decision. And then if you're not going to use park impact fees to pay for everything, what other funding mechanisms do you have? There's the no taxes that you can do. There's odds you can do. There's, there's possibly this one percent sales tax. There's a metropolitan parks district. So it will identify the council's preferred financing approach to doing.
Around for I M D.
I will take it. I will do it.
Jason, does this include the trailer parking? T B C, you discussed tonight, ground harm, vehicles parked there right now, losing all that parking. So the location where you're moving is, is not going to have that problem.
This would, this would come up with a final plan for how to solve the parking problem. It would take, it would take the, the parks master plan that we did rally in your park, based on what we know now, things, and create a final plan that kind of is updated based on that originally. Okay.
Wait, any further?
Oh, you have a, from, uh, a council name.
Yeah, Jason, I know you mentioned, we, we do have the hundred forty-five thousand that's already built in for the mid, uh, for the Midtown, uh, master plan. How much more if we were to shift those funds? Start the process with that one forty-five, how much more would we need?
I, I, I really don't.
You have a ballpark?
I, I would probably say anywhere from fifty to a hundred. It just, it depends on what the bids come back, the, the consultant costs come back. It depends on how, what type of public engagement the council, the planning commission wants to have because you can have everything from informal meetings to statistically valid surveys. Statistically valid surveys significantly more expensive than public open houses. So it's hard, it's, until we start going down and preparing the R F P, it's hard to say. I just don't want to come in and say, yes, a hundred forty-five thousand to do it. It may be getting the whole plan down except for the rates that. I don't know.
Well, we have, that a hundred forty-five was set aside for just Midtown Master Plan. So how are we getting all this more?
Midtown Master Plan was construction level master plan. What Gary was, what Gary didn't put in that R F P was contour line, surveys, you know, to the point that we have design documents almost ready to walk out the door. We're going to take a step back and do conceptual master plans of here's what we want in Allen York Park. Is it ball fields? Is it, this, here's what we want at Allen York Park. And they're going to be more thematic, conceptual in nature. And then a phasing plan. And then when you get to wanting to build those projects, then you spend the money to do it in-depth design.
How long does it take to do that?
I think.
We did that in twenty sixteen if we just started phase one.
I think getting the plan done would run, we would probably be looking at adopting sometime first, second quarter of next. Depending on how robust our public engagement is and how fast we get it to pull them.
That's Allen York Park or are we talking about Midtown East?
This is the whole park system for the city. Where we want to put future trails, where we want to have, you know, where we want to have parks, what facilities we want to have in those parks. Cost estimates for those facilities. And we'll do the cost estimating before we finalize the plans that those lovers can be tweaked. You can ramp down the improvements by end three, three. So it would be the whole park system.
How is that different from? You know, we already have something similar to that in our comp plan. And I know that's much more, you know, thirty thousand foot level. As far as what our comp plan says, we, we need as far as additional fifty acres or sixty acres or whatever and potential this and, and an east town, uh, park at some point and all of that. How much is that going to change? Are we just polishing this up?
I think it's going to be somewhere in the middle. So there's a couple of things that, that will change. When we wrote the, the plan that's no longer certified, we were expecting that we'd have a lot of residential development going into town. Now we don't. So that changes the analysis for parks out there. We know where the food trail is built. We have this Allen York Park Master Plan that was done a year after we did that plan. So a lot of that detail can pulled into it. Um, we know we want to come up with conceptual and we know we have some concerns with Allen York Park. So I would say it would be somewhere between Allen York Park and what you see in the cost plan. This would replace that chapter, replace the Allen York Master Plan and have one singular plan. That is, these are how we want to have our parks in the city, the improvements we want to have in the parks. And, um, begin to have that, a good budget number for what the costs are. And if the costs are too high before we adopt the plan, then we go back and we change the improvements. Because as I said, a ball field is very much more cost expensive than a playground and a grass. And those are just large policy questions that, that the council is going to have to, the council, the planning commission, park commission and the public are going to have to wrestle with.
So I can tag on to that too. The other advantage here that that plan is going to give us the ability to plan for long term. That's something we've never been able to do here. Frankly, it's not done very well. Why we only have two parks employees right now. So before we go down the path of actually constructing these improvements, we really need to have some idea of how it is we'll take care of them. And this plan will identify that well.
I do have a question. So this is part of like R C O. The, um, Washington State Recreation and Conversation or Conservation?
Conservation. Sorry. I was, I was checking very quickly. Um, Conservation Office, I apologize. Um, R C O is a state organism, a state agency that provides grants to cities to build parks. Part of what's used to pay for Allen York Park Fresh Play. In order to begin to qualify and apply for a grant, you have to have a park plan that is certified by them. As of last year, we do not. So if the council chooses not to do this work, then we are not going, well, we'll have cost plan issues, but we'll also have R C O.
Yeah, that's just not a.
Yeah, there's a ton of granting organization. That's just the big one that I don't have, that we physically have to make an application to and request certification. Show our public process what our park improvements are.
There could be others that don't care whether or.
I, 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 I don't know.
I didn't know where there's like that playground equipment, how that one.
I don't know who that one was. I don't remember that. I think that was through a private company.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Examples like that. Definitely. I agree that, you know, that's important. Well, like I think Councilmember Evans pointed out, we need to have a large discussion about how we get there because we're clearly walking through that. Our lot with the no money in our project and.
And we're looking at Lambos.
Right. And I, and I think that's what this project is, is to, to take our walk through that park or that, that. Good luck to identify the cars that we can purchase.
Because we can't do it.
Yeah, you have to start somewhere. I, I think tonight the, the, the nod that we're looking from the, the city council is is there a willingness to consider reallocating the Midtown Park Master Plan funds to begin this process?
We have any further discussion on this?
You might have an answer later.
Yeah.
We want to push, oh, we can't do Midtown, you know, I want to do it that way. Putting my money down there just. I'm on the dream. I'm working.
Right. This is just the plan to figure out where we're going to put this. Which we need a plan of some sort to. Yeah, that's where are you going? Right? So this is kind of what we're talking about. We want, I think the issue was we want to serve, uh, baseball players and that kind of thing and wreck fields and do that whole thing. Or do we just want to put it in place? And we're somewhere between. And that's what, that's the whole point of this process is to have that formal process with the council, planning commission, park commission and public to develop that roadmap. And that's what comes out of this at the end is here is the roadmap. Here is your, here is what it's going to cost you and here is our plan to.
So the problem, I think, you know, councilor, sell up on some.
Master Plan Allen York.
Yeah, how the money?
Yeah, we just transferred two million.
Well.
Sixty ago, eight million, three million a couple of months ago.
Yeah, for one little small piece of.
We haven't turned the shovel yet, so.
So it's in the side of it?
Well, that's my thought process is, I mean, I can show you how much we can make off of all these different options. I think from there is what's going to determine what we can afford. Because having, going out to the public and saying, this is what we, you know, what, what do you guys want? Oh, we want a pool. We want baseball fields. We want this. Great. I do too. How do we afford it? And then when it comes down to it, we're putting in a play, play structure and some rubber higher chips, that's all we can afford. So I think knowing what we can afford, because there's a maximum and a minimum of, you know, doing V N O tax or potential park tax. Some private funding stuff. We've got the Metro Parks District. We've got REITs, forms. We've got, uh, increased park impact fee potential. We've got, uh, creative parking impact fee for commercial. So there's a lot of, you know, moving pieces that I think we're going to discuss a little later that will help define what, what monies will be available. So we know what we can afford.
So what we'll do is I'll leave this in the work plan and if it gets pulled out at next week's council meeting, then we'll know where we're going.
Yeah. But yeah, put this toward the end of the work plan.
It is at the end. Well, it's, it's, yeah, it's in there in the work plan. And if the council wants to strike it, we'll strike it. Um, the last one is we do have to do some work for the periodic update, um, for the comprehensive plan. Um, we do need to do a scope of work so we can identify the work that we actually have to do. We are required by state law to do a periodic update. Right now, parks elements are optional under the R C W. May become mandatory after this legislative session because of some funding packages that this, that they're putting through. I don't know. Um, but we do have to do an update to our comprehensive plan and it's going to be a big update based on some things going on in the legislation. So the first step is identify scope of work so that we can identify what we need consultants for, what we don't need consultants for. And then the other one is prepare the public participation this plan for implementation in next year. There is money already in the planning consultant line, budget items to cover these two work items. They won't be coming to council until after the legislative session. So I know what our target is. Um, but there are some big things that we're going to have to do in twenty-three and twenty-four, like a new transfer. Deal with any changes that are coming out of the legislature, deal with changes because of vision twenty fifty. So there is work that's going to have to be done in that company and we are required by state law.
Are we going to have a development agreement with, uh? Are you going to say?
Chair, we don't know. Um.
They, you know, we, well, I know. So. Got what he was saying.
They're, they're going to come soon.
Yeah. Right now they have a development agreement that expires December of twenty twenty-four. They may approach us with either amendment or a new one. I, I guess it will be a new one. I, those are all council decisions. One, without the council, one, wants to enter into development agreement or just tell them to build under the code. Or the council wants, and then what the terms are. Those are all.
Don't we kind of have that, isn't that a big piece for like this, this planning? But it's built into the existing one, right?
It's built into the existing one as a R three. Okay, you know, we'll talk about it, but it's built in as R three to the R three.
Yeah, but aren't we talking about going from like six hundred units to a thousand units?
And that's the difference between a development agreement and zone capacity. The six hundred is what the development agreement envisioned. The, the, the actually adopted zoning would allow for more. And so there's really not, there's a change from the development agreement, but not a change from the zoning.
But what if we were to rezone it?
That would be the council. There's a process to do that.
Okay. Have we gone on to the public?
Yep. So that's the end of it. So if there's any, I know there's some issues on the park planning, we'll leave it in there, I guess, planning commissioners, and we'll see what happens at next week's city council meeting. Is there any questions I can ask, answer on the work plan in general, kind of turns, issues as we kind of finalize this up for next week?
Looks like not. Do we have any other discussion?
I said it kind of, so we're going to talk about the, the parks plan. I think the main thing that when we were discussing this last time, that I thought was really notable was that we'd have an overall park plan for all of Bonnie Lake instead of just picking one individual park, working on that park and then having another park and working on that park. It's going to have all the parks. So we can figure out, okay, we can afford this in this park and this in this park instead of doing one park at a time, piecemeal by piecemeal. Having an overall plan to see what improvements we can do and what plan. And then going from there instead of like, Justin said, where you already have a master plan for Allen York and just focusing on that part. We can do all of them. So I'm, I was just waiting to know.
Councilwoman Swatman, you remember a few years ago, we had that, uh, bond issue for a park bond? And it was supposed to be so much of a tax. But I know what happened was the people who were pushing it discovered that they couldn't get an agreement as to what was to be built. That, you know, we had, okay, we want this, but we want B N X or a first big golf or this, that, the other thing. So it kind of needs to be clear, this is what the people want.
The lack of agreement, that happened in the commission? I'm sorry, I, I missed your answer.
It was a lack of agreement.
Yes, and I'm, I'm asking where in process did that happen? Did it happen in the commission?
It happened when they, it happened when the people who were moving for it tried setting it up. I mean, you know, it was, if you spend the money, we'll take the money and we'll do these wonderful things. But nobody could say what the wonderful things were.
Now, but when you say nobody and everybody went to determine who these people were, were they part of the commissioner?
It was the citizens in the city who were trying to get a park going. It was a grassroots effort.
Okay.
If, if I'm not mistaken, this was for. Okay, if I'm not mistaken, this was for the Metro Parks District.
Right, yeah.
Right, outside of city control.
Okay, oh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it wasn't any, and it was an agreement between the city council, what part objects would be part of that.
Oh yeah, and that was a never ending.
Okay, I believe it's time to move to item E.
Hold on, which, do I take some water before we do that?
No, I'm good. I apologize. I think this, I'm sorry, we have some big, heavy ones on the agenda tonight, but these are just kind of setting up the work for the next year. So, this I think is going to be, I'm going to do my best to explain this quickly and succinctly. We are required to adopt, or actually, we are required to plan for specific growth targets that are consistent with Vision 2050 and also consistent with state law. City does not specifically adopt our target, county adopts our target with our G. But we have to do it in confinement of that larger plan. So, the way that the kind of planning framework works in the Puget Sound region is you've got the Growth Management Act. We have to send our comprehensive plan update to them to have them certify it. We also have the Pierce County Regional Council, the Puget Sound Regional Council, which has what they call MPPs, which are required by state law. They're also required to certify our comprehensive plan as part of Vision 2050, which is the multi-county planning policy.
I'm trying to figure all the pieces, because they've changed over. So, then you said the Puget Sound.
Regional Council.
Regional Council kind of adopts ours, but in reality, aren't they still adopting the counties? Or are they actually adopting?
No, they certify ours, and they certify each and every individual comprehensive.
So they can throw out Bond Lake?
Correct, okay. Which is what they did in 2015 when we were conditionally certified. Councilmember Evans was part of those. I kind of drug him into that line with me. And we took many, many hours at PSRC before we were. To. When you say indeed. Multi-county planning policy. Which cover Kitsap, Nahomish, Pierce, and. You know, that's the four counties. They're not a governmental agency that exists outside of the locally adopted. They're made up of locally adopted people from local governments. So Bruce Danmeyer, I think, was on the executive floor for the last couple of years. So it's, Councilmember Evans actually sat on the Growth Management Policy Board for a couple of years. So it is made up of locally elected politicians from all these different jurisdictions. Then there's the countywide planning policies, which are required by state law, and those are adopted by the Pierce County Regional Council, and our comprehensive plan has to be consistent with all of them. And we do have to get those two certifications for lots of different reasons.
And the countywide policy planning or planning policies were just adopted last month.
Yep.
By the Pierce County.
So, as part of that, they established this thing called a regional growth strategy. We talked to council briefly about this in November of 2020. And the regional growth strategy identified, a regional growth strategy of how growth would be divvied up between the cities and towns and counties within the Puget Sound region. And they focus on persons per household, they focus on housing units, population and employment. PSRC sets up a big one that says, and we'll get to it, this group has this much population, this group has this much population, this group has this much population. The counties are then required to divvy that up between those little groups, and the county then adopts a final target. In 2020, we presented some options. So as we went into those negotiations, we had kind of a guiding line. The council, our current comprehensive plan was based on a 2% growth rate. We ended up settling on a 1.28% growth rate, which would add, and these are the two important numbers. The most important number, as we walked through this room, 2,615 housing units by 2044. At that time, we were assuming 2.92 persons per household.
Are those single family homes?
Any housing unit, single family, multifamily, duplex, triplex, it's just housing.
How has the population growth matched the predictions? That this has been the 2020?
Yeah, we have, this was, and this was for 2044, so we don't even know how well they matched up.
So considerably. By the 29,000, 25,000 a week?
Yes or no? I want to get into this a little bit more. That was our prediction, was that we assumed a 1.28% growth rate over the next 20 years. That's what our population would be based on our 2020 population. And that set our negotiation point when we went in, when we to negotiate for 7,600 people and 2,600 housing units. Which was a challenge. And we'll kind of get into that, so.
Does that include annexation or something?
It does not include annexation. So that's just within our current incorporated.
And if I could just make. The goal of the county.
Urban areas.
Urban areas, yeah.
I would say that's the goal of King County, Kitsap, Nahomish County, Pierce County, it's kind of debate.
But that is the goal, that the counties do end up breaking.
That was PSRC's goal, yes.
Yeah, the urban area, but yeah, that's that discussion piece where we've always, you know, King County, I think, did a pretty good job of, you know, realizing the urban level services, going urban areas that they have. They've over a period of time have been very good about pushing, you know, into the urbanized cities and urban, the urban areas. As opposed to Pierce County, which used to be like building out in the middle of, I don't know, you know, they would pick an area and put 4,000 pounds down, it wouldn't go off to the city, it wouldn't be urban area, it would be urban.
Right. In that same scenario, King County only has 10% of unincorporated, where Pierce is over 40.
Right, yeah.
And that's where that, that dynamic, that's why the growth targets are being pushed on the the city areas, the urban areas.
Yeah, and are they going that way more than?
Well, interesting thing happened when I did the growth and growth strategy. They created two, they took the old small, large city and small cities category and threw them out and created two new ones. What is called high-capacity transit means, which means you have a light rail either planned or built, or a BRT, bus rapid transit, or on the sounder rail. And so, those are considered high-capacity transit. And because there's BRT planned for South Hill and Spanaway and Mid County, they, those parts of the county got put into the high-capacity transit. And then Eric, the other urban unincorporated area, probably Ardell and the Warren category. County kind of got themselves split into two. We, because we do not have high-capacity transit as defined in the, in the Vision 2050, were put into the small cities, towns, cities and towns category, which included those cities, Buckley, Carbonado, Eatonville, Edgewood, Gig Harbor, Milton, Orting, Pacific, Royland, Ruston, Southbury, Dillon, Kevin, Wilkins. We, as a group, are expected to take 7% of the county's population growth over the next 20 years.
Where did some of their, oh, they're in the top.
Some are moved up because they have a sounder station, so they're expected to take more.
Despite where we're sitting in path that says we are in, RTA is open.
So those are different.
Don't be confused by the text.
Those are two different issues. You actually had to have the.
No, okay.
You had to have a.
Paying for it.
Yeah, you don't have to pay for it. So you had to have, you had to have the sounder rail.
So is that 7% in that category for us kind of equate to 7% growth?
No, no, 7% of the overall population, which equates to us not adding more than 18,000 people as a group. And this is where it gets tricky. Between 2020 and 2044.
Okay.
So part of our growth that we're going to be planning for is already kind of baked in, because it's happened over the last two years. When we went into those negotiations, this is where we landed. Bonnie Lake was at 3,000, we had 5,000 people in population. Part of the goofy math that we did to make this work, and I was okay with it, was we assumed a lower person per household than what we currently have, because most of our planning for infrastructure is based on housing units and not population. So, if we plan for the right number of housing units, it really doesn't matter what the population does. So if we're planning for 3,000 housing units, and we have 3,000 housing units, and the population is double, we're okay, because everything we do is based on housing. So for example, transportation, it is so many trips per housing unit, and it has nothing to do with our current population or our population per household. It's based on engineering studies that are fine. So, an average, an average single-family home has 2.14 trips in a PPM hour. That's what we plan for. So, doesn't matter as much as population, it matters what we do with housing.
So, are these all the cities in that category? These towns, 7% Bonnie Lake. Bonnie Lake is being the one that's taking the plus growth, is Bonnie Lake also the biggest?
Yes, we're by far, of that group, we are by far the largest.
Okay.
So what, what happens if we don't?
There's no penalty for, there's no penalty for going over, and there's no penalty for not hitting. But you have to at least.
Yeah, yeah.
You have to, you have to plan for it. You can't, you can't say that we're not going to plan for it, but if you don't hit your target, that's okay. Of your target, that's okay. Yes. And that's why it's important that we get the right number, and that's why I fit focusing on population and housing. Because all those critical infrastructure decisions, and the couple that we do use on population, we can easily convert the housing units so that we can have a good measure. And the reason you don't see 3,000 including 7,500, which would be two and a half times 3,000, is we applied the two and a half to our existing housing, housing stock. So that lowered it, and then we added it in, and then, so that's how we made the numbers work. Because remember, we had to hit 18,000, and I'm okay with the population numbers being goofy, as long as our housing unit number is correct. And what the other thing that we convinced PSRC to let us do is their, their, their Vision 50, 2050 goes out to 2050, we're only planning to 2044. So we kind of borrowed a little growth for those six out here. That's why we were allowed to get to 1978. Kind of, we kind of pre-borrowed some of that future growth.
Help me here, because I was trying to figure out where I'm going to put about thirty of these numbers. I think we have to put 1,500 single-family homes.
So let me kind of get through this, and then that, that's, that's, that's the question we're going to, that's the end, at the end of the day, the number I'm looking for, the council is going to.
Part of these units is already in.
Some are, some not. And I do know a slide that kind of shows that, right? The other thing that kind of came out when we did this is we also did the buildable lands report. Buildable lands report came back and said, we don't have capacity for 3,000 housing units. Now, I will say that the buildable lands takes out huge swaths of land, so that it's being conserved. So, it doesn't assume that all underutilized properties will be developed. It doesn't assume that all vacant properties will be developed. It only assumes a certain percentage, and sometimes it's as low as 50%. So that, when we say capacity, it's assuming that market factor is pulling land off the market. So it could be higher, it could be lower, but that's, that's where we get to that 2920. So that's the first question, is we already know that we're going to have to go down below 3,000, because if we don't, we're going to have to do measures, what they call reasonable use measures, to increase our zoning capacity to get back up to 3,000.
So did we already do the buildable land report?
Yes, it got done in 2021.
I don't know how, you know, it seems to me you could do that any old way you wanted to.
The county does it by state law. Yeah, so we provide all of our development data to them, and there's very specific rules on what's considered a vacant property, what's considered an underutilized property, what's considered a vacant single unit. And then we give them our pipeline project, because as I said, we did this in 2021, based on 2020 population data. So we fed them all of the data. And then they use market studies and market analysis to determine what gets deducted out of that.
Seems like there would be a huge amount of variability in there, and that, you know, you're like, oh, well, your lot has to be, you know, 10,000 square feet for a single-family home.
And we provide, we provide all of our zoning data and assumptions to the council, so.
It's like your other number, some of the little parameters you would typically change.
Right, which, if anything, we did would push the capacity.
Which was what my question, that the density was.
We assume the density is currently in the zone. So, for your R1, it's 45 units per acre, for R2, it's 89 units per acre. R3, we base, we base it on observed build out, and so we take, like, redwood and see what the density per acre on redwood was, and other multifamily units that we developed, and that is the density that we use for R3, because R3 doesn't have a density.
And I don't know why we'll have this discussion, of course, because, you know, I'm trying to think fast enough here, but you can use that density, then you're saying, oh my gosh, you know, we have to provide this amount of buildable unit, because this is what we had for a core of the plan, right?
We are, actually, the only thing that buildable lands has to do is if you set your target at 3,000, the buildable lands needs to say you have the capacity for 3,000.
Yeah, yeah, right.
If you set your target lower than the buildable lands capacity, totally fine. Because, and this, this, I will say, the council is in a very good position. Because we are borrowing already from that future growth between 2044 and 2050, we do have the ability to take it even further below 2920. Right, so that's still a council decision that could. I'm just trying to say, we know 3,000 is not going to work because of the buildable. We know we're not going to go through an ozone problem. I mean, that's a, a line in the sand that I, that I've measured correctly. So, this gets to the heart of, I think, the Councilman's question. With 2920, which is our max that we could do, we had units that we expect to be completed by 2024, which is going to be our kind of 20-year planning horizon, of 739 housing units. Those developments are listed on the side. It's a combination of single-family home and apartment, either already under construction or complete. So, the View by Vintage was done after April 1st of 2020, so it's not included on our 2020 population baseline, it's part of our future target. And that's, so that's where we get the 739. Which lowers that to what we're really planning for between 2024 and 2044, to 2181. We have two big pipeline projects, 594 for WSU Residential, and 194, 195 for the bottom interest senior housing unit project that was already going through fire. That puts us at 7, or those 789, which drops our kind of free-flowing, we don't know where it's going to go, to 1,392 houses.
WSU one, or you mean?
Yeah, it's over, if you look under, where it says pipeline projects completed after 2024, there's a 789, there's a little text box at the bottom. And our assumption was 594, which was kind of what the document. Could be a thousand, I don't know. I mean, that, that, we're not trying to have that debate. We're just trying to base it on things that are approved in, in the pipeline.
Where are you looking at, with potential other 13, 14?
Anywhere in the city, any vacant lot, underutilized lot. I have, I have a half-acre piece of property. I have sewer now, so I don't need my septic. I could put two more.
There's no large swaths of land like a or.
Not.
In, back in old, that 500 homes.
Not that size, but we do have a lot. We're, we're at a transition period. I'm just saying housing units.
So by building, right, so I got 300 housing units, or by building 300?
Right, yeah, but I mean, there's, this 1,300 is.
So we have two free maps in right now for land in the city, and I think those are subdivisions, different housing subdivisions. And they're upwards, so the two of them provide about 80 lots. So you're going to see a lot more of these, what I call, mid-range subdivisions, where you're doing 30 or less. You're not going to be seeing the big broke stones and, and, and style, and stuff. You're going to be seeing more of those mid-range, and a lot more of the short flats, because that's up to 10 lots. You're going to see a lot more of that type of development. And don't forget the one I didn't put on here, because there's not an active application, is Skystone, which is over behind Target. That was 200, 240 houses. So the question is, if you want to do this, what I recommended in the ordinance is we go just a little bit below this, do it at 2820. It's up to the city council. I mean, we want to make it, this is a double-edged sword. If you make it too narrow, you're going to underplay the roads, the storm, the streets. 26, if you go back to that original slide, 2,600 was kind of that. 1.82% growth rate. So I can answer questions. But this is, this is, this number is critical to everything we're going to do for the next year.
Or is Skystone is. Over targeted at, I mean, that sewer sitting there for years. So, I mean, that's the other side that you're talking about. Which isn't necessarily a bad thing for 2050.
Right. So does the council want to stay at 2820 or do you want to go more like 27? I mean.
Well, I, I'm a little unclear on moving the number. Why that was, you know, planning.
Because, uh, because when we go to do the planning, when we go to do our transportation modeling, we're going to say between 2020 and 2044, we're going to add 2,600 housing unit. We're going to assume it has this many trips. So if you were to set the number at 1,300.
We're gonna try it out. I'm trying to figure this one out because, you know, right behind, um, 600, we want to go to 1,100. We don't have, we don't have a traffic impact or we don't have a traffic plan that says, oh, we're going to put left in this back.
They're, 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 out of the development agreement, they're required to do a traffic study to now analyze the traffic impact.
And then they'll pay for the, for. Have an origin.
Okay. This is the. Right. But this is the citywide.
That's what I'm saying.
This is citywide. It's not just, because traffic impact is, are charged on all single family homes.
Can I imagine how you, you know, because again, that. Oh, well. You know, five hundred homes.
We don't, when we're doing traffic analysis, we're not doing them at the, at the comprehensive planning level. We're not doing them at the parcel level. We're doing them called in like transportation analyzation. Where we're assuming groups of properties and putting trips existing and proposed on those.
Oh, if it turns out that we say don't want project that. That expires or something, um, and, you know, that greatly affects your number, like just how you sit there.
Yeah. Where, how was that number on the january 17th? Where is that number at?
It's in the box underneath.
The box, okay. Seven maybe, maybe look at that. But then that's not added in right now.
No, it's subtracted out because we're expecting it to occur after 2024. What I was trying to put out is, is turning into the question, Councilman McClyman says, where are we going to foot it? So if we set it at 2820, we're really only talking about where we're going to set 11, 1,200 houses in the next. 20 years. And then note that we will update this again in the. So that's why I say why we're focused on housing units and housing units is what's going to drive transportation planning, parks planning.
They kind of, isn't the whole idea that he told us, you shall do this, like you shall make allegations for?
No, the buildable lands is just, this is what your capacity.
Hey, yeah, but what did that comprehensive plan level, you know, the re. Why do you like have to plan for 50,000 housing?
That was the number we put on there. We, we as a group have to, we as a group have to at least plan for 18,530. Housing, housing unit, um.
Population.
A population. And I think it's some other, some number of housing units. That's over. We just borrowed some future growth. So there is the ability to adjust those numbers downward if the council wants to set the target. I'm just cautioning, don't set the target too low because then you'll underplay there.
I, my question goes back. Where, what stage are we at belting this ordinance for the council?
It's in the packet. The resolution will be before the city council next week. Cause I have to give that work back to. Yeah, peer, peer, peer scouting to begin their process.
And, and I'm sorry, I interrupted you. You said that, that, uh, you terms ordinance and you.
This is what, this is done by resolution.
Okay.
Does it, does it number it?
Yeah. Right now, what's in the resolution is it says that we're going to set our. The council's saying that our housing target should be for units 2850, uh, population would be 76. So that was, that was based at 3, 3,591 population. I don't worry about population. It could be whatever, it could double. The big numbers are 2850. That's the, the critical number.
And cats have to be. That's your recommendation?
That's my, my recommendation because when we did the, if you go back to the first slide. And, and then, and this is, when we did this, this was that slide that we presented in November of 2020, this table over here. And what the council said is, I said, if we did one, one and a half, it would be 31 housing units. If we did 1.28, it would be 26 housing units. The council's direction at that time was to do 2615 housing. Which is why I'm recommending the 2820 because it's between that 1.8. It gives us a little bit of a buffer. As a former councilor says, because I don't have a. Um, so that, so that's why we picked the number we did because it's led between that council, what the council's direction was.
But this is based on housing unit. Has our growth been for the last five or six years?
It's been high and that.
Exceeding that 1.28.
Exceeding that, but we've also had years where it's been lower. Uh, and I will say that as you, as a city, as we get rid of greenfield development like Skystone and Sky Island. You're going to see that growth, that growth percentage start to level off. When I was in Des Moines, we, you know, our growth rate sometimes was a half percent. Because we were to that point where we didn't have big 80 acres of land that was being developed into 300 homes. You know, and so what happened here between 2007 and now is you had the recession and DR Orbin came through and built out all of it. Sky Island got completely done. We had a bunch of plats that were actually done by the county before the recession in 2007, that builders came in and just built out all at once. And so we had this, I think, what was it? 2017, 2018, we had the highest. Revenue that we'd ever had in the city. Uh, and then we had the, you know, so we had this huge upswing in, in population. Because of that, that is not going to be something that you see long-term, which is why we, when we did this back in November of 2020, we settled on that 1.28% growth rate. Assuming that as we get to the outer years, it might decline. And that's why we, to give back to your question, why we picked the 2820, because it was mid, it was kind of mid-range between. That 1.5 and 1.28% growth rate that the council had indoors back in 2020.
But you only include 500?
Correct. So if, so if WSU went to 1,100, then it would put 1,300 housing, you know. Less units, you know, throughout the city.
Jason, I recall five years ago, we had very few buildable lots in the city and it's going down a very few. And I was still building our city. And more family homes are being taken down and that loss is pushing, pushing our homes out of lots. That's going to continue to grow with the price of homes going up. So wouldn't you be better off having a higher number on there? Well, we had a lot of properties that they could take over.
We're only talking about whether you're going to be at 2820 or 2920. Cause at 2920, if you go over 2920, your buildable land says you don't have the capacity. I'm not saying that Councilman Resos is not right, that you could play with those numbers and get them to whatever you want, but if the county does that, that's kind of studying that bar. If you go over 2920, then you have to say, these are the reasonable measures we're going to take to add additional capacity, which really is, that would work for real. So increased gives it. So knowing that that's not something the council wants to do, we started at 2920. As of this. Analysis back in November of 2020, we picked the 2820 because it was closer in that map. Yeah. The home, the prices are getting to where a small older home. On a half acre is worth tearing down a small older home to build two larger homes or two luxury.
How about six?
Well, a half acre, you're going to two. I mean, that, 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 that control is there. I'm sorry, I had 28.
2850.
You, you aren't.
Well, what happens if we way exceed that?
Well, we'll both come back to retirement and now that that plan, if they did not do a good job in those last year updates.
Well, I know we're about to be planning, but what does that affect?
So it, that's why we do, we plan for a 20 year horizon, but do eight year check.
Okay.
So every, so every year we're going to come back and say, okay, how, you know, we'll look back and see how we did and we'll look forward. So I did the 2015 update. I'm doing the 2024 update. I'm going to do. Probably more, two more. Um, so we're always, we're always monitoring that to see where we're doing compared to. And I will say it's not perfect. I know. It's not perfect, but we're trying to put boundary, meet three or four different sides of our same rooms.
Matt Park, could you order Mr. Sullivan's crystal balls?
I would love that. Right. Um, and then the final piece of this, only because I have to tell you, tell you that we put the numbers in there. Is they assigned us 1,717 jobs as our target between now and 2024. I will tell you what we'll buy it. I'm not worried about it because we don't use jobs for any infrastructure analysis. Because there's no way to correlate jobs to a trip. There's no way to correlate jobs to a business. Cause if you have a mini warehouse, you're going to have one trip rate and one, and one employee. If you have an industrial plant, you're going to have different trip rates if you have retail. And since the jobs are just generic. I have never once, because we don't use those, we don't use that number for analysis. I don't even worry about it. They tell me what number it is, I put it in and say, yeah, we're doing. We don't know. And so I don't, I've, I've never been a big strong supporter of this number. Which is why when they said, hey, we want you to do 17, I just went, it's like, we've already blown past our last number. And I have a feeling we'll blow past this one, which is combining that. But we use a different matrix to do the analysis for transportation, but number of employees.
The jobs does count for the.
Yes. But this is just our target. We're saying we're going to plan for 1,717 jobs. If we add 1,717 jobs in the next six months, we'll just keep adding jobs. That's what I'm saying. There's not an impact going over and there's not an impact to the analysis. So. It's most, you can spend a lot of time getting worked out about, really doesn't have a downside either. But the council will came with the targets where they're at in the present. I, we can just, unless the planning commission has anything or. And I'm sorry, that was very long winded. I apologize, but.
I'm good, Jason. Thank you, John.
This is something that just sets up everything for the next two years for all of Ohio.
We'll have the same question.
And thank you. I will take no more of your time unless there's any other questions.
Or Matt Park. Fill in the math on a, the leading inventory present.
Yeah, I will, I will figure out.
And just, uh, does planning commission have any questions, a discussion for? Okay. All right. Well, that, that does conclude the special joint meeting. Um, now we're going to go to our regular council workshop.
I, I'd like to, I'd, I'm.
It was very hard. We appreciate that.
And, and Jason, I'm.
And for the first time in two years, we have a full planning division. So thanks to everyone that stepped up, Craig, Debbie, Carrie, Jessica, Todd, uh, Grant and Brad. Lots of good faces.
Yeah. It is council on a full planning division. We're in good shape.
Yeah.
Well, it was very nice to put half a face to a name. I'm glad to see all. Um, all right. Now with our regular council, um, workshop meeting, we are, uh, opening it for council open discussion. Anybody wish to discuss anything? Okay, Deputy Mayor Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, I had a bit of an issue with, uh, the issue that was drawn up last week, uh, now coming in in regards to the vaccine. And to the senior center. Uh, and the resolution that we had passed last year. And my understanding is that, uh, now we would need a. Basically consent of the council for a motion to make it more formal as we set a policy for, uh, a vaccine or not having a vaccine on the board. I would certainly be in favor of that. That's, that's. Set us in the same direction that the, uh, resolution was initially for. I think we need to not be discriminatory towards anyone. Or attract any higher leaning.
I just have to put, I have a question for Cleveland. We said that about the senior center. That would also include the senior center staff, which would then. Be a OSHA or LNI violation, which may trigger other people to say that this staff at the senior center have proprietary. Uh, exclusions and now the staff here. Out there. I'm, I'm just seeing a chain falling here.
Yeah. So I understand the question that you want to consider is whether to require proof of vaccination or maybe a test to use. And because there's no state or county mandate, are you, that you can set certain policy how you wish as a council?
Would that be just for those attending?
Well, you'd be free to set policy in any, um, way that's not already controlled by, for example, Department of Labor. I'll need to have any help.
Is, is there still policies in place with, uh, labor and industries for city employees?
Well, for mask wearing and social distancing and sanitizing and contact tracing and things like that.
Oh, okay.
But there's not a vaccination mandate that applies to senior center employees. The only mandate applies to the.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion. I'd make a motion to, uh. So that we clearly declare that use of, uh, city facilities and programs, uh. Don't require that proof of vaccination.
Okay. And just to, uh, be clear on that, in following this services rule, what our vote would be right now is. Councilmember McClyman's just moved to amend the resolution and that's all the lead that we've been voting on at the moment. So. Um, all in favor of, uh, council member. Are we amending the resolution or are we setting a. Policy for. Right.
I don't need to send you a policy rather than a mandate.
And, uh, and point of order of Ms. Hager, I am correct in, in just them voting for this motion only at the moment. Thus, I grabbed on, on the procedure.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you again, man.
Okay, uh, council member McClyman, uh, uh, moved to amend resolution. And that is correct, council member.
Um, well, no, not so much. I, I wanted to explore amending the resolution, but the council had indicated that we should just make, my motion was just to set a clear policy. Um, all, a standalone policy that the use of city facilities or programs would not be based on vaccines, proof of vaccination.
And, um, as our parliamentary procedure, um, that would mean that right now. We only vote on the fact that there's a motion on the floor and the, and the council accepts that motion to vote on. Is that correct?
Well, I think the council should give direction. As I, as I mentioned in my emails to a few of you, you've got another week, well, more than a week before the senior center happens. So I think you have a choice. You could act tonight or you could have staff present you with a motion to vote on next week. Really up to you. But if you wanted to make the motion tonight and see if there's a second, then call for discussion and then call for vote.
Okay. I'd like to, excuse me, I'm sorry, Colleen.
Oh, I was just going to suggest that we do this next week because I've, I've received emails from constituents on voting. On workshop nights rather than on council nights where there's not an opportunity for open discussion. And I think, I think if they're able to do that next week, we can still do it and still meet the, the deadline.
I just don't want to spend more time reminding us than we need to, because I think there's. I don't have more time waiting. I think that's great to do it. I just don't think I will. They have to need to spend any time on it.
So now we do have to vote on that as to whether to entertain. So now we do have to vote on that as to whether to entertain the motion, I for, entertain it next week.
I, I don't know how technically you want to get, you know, because we don't even have the agenda for this, because the action, even the motion, right?
No, and you don't have to.
Well, we, we, I would, I would find it very strange if the council would bring up any subject, any time and form a motion to vote on this thing.
Um, and I believe this advocates.
Well, you're gonna need to suspend your rules, and you could do that by some office process.
Yeah.
But it, but it sounds like there were a couple naughty kids when your discussion was made to wait till. But that's a direction you wanna go, we can write up a quick motion, I don't, it just need to take.
Right, but, uh, you know, I, I would, and Councilmember McQuinans, I don't understand the fact that, you know, obviously the council would not want to have a vaccination mandate used to facilities, and if that resolution was, as by the council panel mean that way, it might not have been more accurate.
Do I recall that particular resolution was of the council and not of the city?
Right, and, but I would think, and that's why I was trying to figure out, like, oh, wait a minute, you know, they, they, the administration had to make a decision, and they made a decision to have a vaccine policy, right? Why is it such a big deal when, you know, certainly the majority of the council, vast majority of the council says, well, that's not what we, well, why, why is this, you know, why do you have to, you know, all this kind of stuff? Because the mayor would be just like, oh, okay, I understand, you know, we're gonna move.
No, I understand that, and to answer your question, Councilmember Swatman, um, we, um, technically, um, abide by the rules, encouraged rules of parliamentary procedure on this council. Um, the most, uh, councils actually go by Robert's Rules, not much difference in circus and Rob, Robert's Rules, but we are a council. And this council should be going by a proper procedure, we have, I believe, as a council, we have a little too way with it. And, uh, with that, we should have a little bit more, uh, formality with it, meaning that we will have clarity then. And I believe that if we were to do it as a proper motion and have a proper vote as to, um, as to when this should be heard, it would be much clearer not only to the council, but to the public.
You're very accurate, Mr. Mayor, but however, you know, how did, how did the decision came about to require a vaccination mandate, that was ever, ever said?
Well, that's point of order, because that is not what we are discussing right now.
That's exactly what we're discussing, I, I differ.
No, no, we're discussing parliamentary procedure, we're not discussing.
We are discussing an issue where the administration took on an issue as they should and made a decision.
I, I understand what your, uh, which concerns Councilmember Swatman, however, I'm still gonna take this to a vote.
No, you, you can do whatever you like, Mr. Mayor, but however, I mean, you know, the council was pretty clear on the resolution that previously. Odd that we have to go through all the iteration and all the, like, above to undo what the council previously had done.
Well, my, my understanding without going beyond parliamentary, that government is iteration, reiteration.
Well, you know, where was the motion that says that there shall be a, uh, vaccination requirement for the use of, where was that motion?
Well, it was, uh, discussed, uh, with our city attorney, who is also our parliamentarian. Uh, the advice that she gave, I believe specifically Councilmember McQuinans, was that he could actually exoneratively move through this. And I believe she just explained that five, five minutes ago, that, that the power is there to do it.
No, I was talking about the vaccination mandate.
No, and I'm talking about parliamentary procedures, so I don't understand why we are, are differing on this. We're not going back to the, you know, to, to the mandate. We're gonna say, well, we're already whether to vote on it, I think, or vote on it or next week. Yes.
You're requiring a vote of seven. That was put in, yes, without, uh, that's, I believe, what Councilmember Swatman is saying.
Then, and I'm sorry, I did, I did not understand.
The council did not vote to put that mandate on the seat.
Okay.
But you're requiring the council to vote to take it away. Why, why is it, why is it acceptable for the administration to put in a policy without the vote of the council, but it takes a vote of the council to the policy of the administrator?
Uh, my, I, I, I don't understand, uh, where you're coming from as far as taking anything away, but I'm simply saying that as far as, uh, when the vote happens, now, the council has the consensus of whether they wish to vote tonight, and it should be by proper procedure done by a formal vote.
How did this mandate get and put, put into place without the vote of the council?
Um, it was, uh, put into place by, uh, the, by the executive department. And, um, according to the RCWs and we can ask our city attorney, um, the executive department can, uh, has the power to, uh, to, to put that initially in place, however, it does, it can come to the council for them to either, um, override it or sustain it.
Well, fundamentally, I believe that as a city council.
Yes.
So, um, you know, the council, it's up to, it's up to the seven of you, but policy might have.
Yes. Now, and I'm not talking about the substance of, of the vote, I'm just talking about the procedure of the vote, so that we have it clear, now, as a council, you can vote on it tonight. As a council, you can vote on it next week, I believe that we've had discussion on putting it next week, so we can get a little bit more info.
I think the, the issue is, why didn't we find out about it from someone that couldn't go into the senior center? We found out about it last week when someone came up and talked during open council and said that she did not attend because of the vaccine mandate.
Yes, that is, um, that is correct, I, and I.
The council was not aware of that prior to that citizen coming out here.
Um, and I believe that question can be addressed in some human, or, um, how, how, we, we had a meeting and then we, it sort of, how was the broadcast?
The, uh, senior center manager put out a broadcast with, um, when we, the senior center would be opening, and the requirements for how to, um, sign up for the Valentine's meal, as well as the restriction. So it was, it was distributed, um, it was distributed through the senior center to all the attendees who had signed up for email notification for the senior center activities.
So a administrative policy was put into place without the consent of the council, without the notification of the council, on a mandate that we, at the time, the seven of us said, we did not want in place in this city. And yet, the only way we were notified of it was when a citizen came to us and told us. Not anyone seeing no, no glitches in that scenario? Should we not have been asked about it prior to, if not at least notified?
And I, I know you're directing that question to me, uh, the only, uh, the only way that I can satisfactorily answer that question, that, um, he, uh, uh, we had four of us in the executive department that had, that had a meeting about that, we discussed, um, how it should happen, and yes, I will, I will take fault for the fact that I did not notify the council, I think, devious.
No.
I am, you, you, uh, still trying to learn the process, which is why we're, why we're going, uh, uh, through this, but I was under the assumption that, uh, the council didn't know. I didn't know the emails were not given, and, and I found out just when you did, about, uh, about the council not from last week. So, you know, it wasn't learned, and we will go forward from it.
So the question is, why are we taking a vote on something that we put it on seven months ago?
Uh, because it's an amendment to that resolution.
The resolution still stands true to this day?
Actually, it happens.
Yes.
Uh, it's actually my recommendation that you. Uh, because, you know, you might have heard the expression that you can't find a future council with a resolution. I think that's overstating things, but I think the issue is that resolutions are a broad statement of policy, and you are constituted slightly differently now than you were back then. And the resolution doesn't precisely, precisely address this question. So I think if you wanna go this direction, um, it's my recommendation that you go, a motion just to clean things up.
And on, and, and, I'm sorry, the, the, I was just thinking, I sort of, I, if you said a motion, are you saying then as ordinance that would be brought forward, or, I don't understand, is it a policy aspect?
You could do it by ordinance if you chose, it, it, an ordinance might be a little bit overkill for the situation because it's a policy, and I think what you wanna do is just get clear directions.
Just, just a motion.
A, a motion.
Councilmember McQuinans, uh, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Oh, okay. Um, okay, well, i- i- and if that is the case, is there any further discussion on questions?
Yeah, I think we should find out in the senior center why they wanna do that. They have to realize we have a lot of vulnerable people down there, and they may want to participate. They wanna mention that they're have been vaccinated, even this one young lady can't get the vaccination. You know, other people that maybe have a type of cancer and stuff, they're concerned about any reaction, so that'd be something for us to discuss, I'm not saying that's why I'm wrong, I'm just saying that could be why they decide to make that decision down there, and that should be part of our discussion, too.
No, and, and I do understand that, uh, Councilmember Watson, and I wanna make the, uh, very clear before I address, uh, Councilmember Holton, on this is the only thing that I am putting forth tonight has to do with the procedure of the vote. It has nothing to do with the substance of the resolution. Um, and it, so, so we can get, it, it to further clarification as our city attorney is, uh, uh, has advised as soon as concerned about, that, that's, that's merely all that I was.
And I agree with Councilman Carter, or Carter, that we should do that, we need to. I'd like that to be brought back to us next week.
Okay, and, oh, I, I understand, and, and Councilmember Holton wants to.
Yeah, so, this resolution is freedom resolution, this is freedom of choice. So anybody who wants to get vaccinated can get vaccinated, but we are not going to mandate that somebody, in order for them to go into a public facility, is going to have to get vaccinated. And we also have in here a policy on mask wearing as well, that that is going to be the freedom of choice, and we are not going to discriminate against any city, uh, citizens that choose to not wear a mask for medical reasons or for any other reason. It's, it's your choice, it's freedom of choice. And that's what this resolution is about. It was rewritten before its time, it's pretty amazing and wonderful, I think. Um, and so to me, this is saying, yes, you can go into a city-owned facility, which actually belongs to the citizens, it's publicly owned. Um, so therefore, they can enter their building at their choice, whether they want to be vaccinated or unvaccinated, and they can be masked or unmasked.
Thank you, do we have a, oh, and Councilmember Holton?
Yeah, I guess my, my question is, what was the reasoning behind this decision as far as protecting citizens there, because I, I'm assuming there was some sort of intent behind this, the decision that was made without the council's knowledge. So I guess my question is, how did, how was that, how did you come to, I guess, that conclusion?
And, uh, to better answer that question, um, I believe that we would have to have President, um, the, uh, director of the senior center, because she was an integral part of that discussion. And, um, since, uh, she's not here, I would prefer answering them from.
Um, I guess my other question then is, if, if the intent was to protect the elderly, which I'm assuming that's what that was all about, um, which I totally understand, I just, I guess the question I have to ask next is, is there a difference between a person who is unvaccinated versus a person who is vaccinated as far as their ability to spread the virus?
Okay, and since I'm not part of the substance of the, uh, of the decision of the resolution carrying this, and, uh, of going through the procedure, I believe that question has, has to be the council as opposed to myself, because I'm not part of the vote.
I, I feel like I can understand the difference between a person who is unmasked and masked as far as, well, wearing an N95 mask personally. Um, and again, I'm just concerned with the science behind everything, and so, um, I, I don't know that there's, there's much of a difference between a person's ability to spread the virus, whether they are vaccinated or not. But across both cores, they both can. And so I, I just don't know, it, it's not following a lot of logic to me, as far as the decision that was made without the council's knowledge, not that you need to seek approval, it sounds like, right? It sounds like the executive folks can make decisions like that, but I, I, I think the problem that the council members are having right now is, we are supposed to be representing the public, and when decisions are made, I know, I know you're saying that it wasn't done, you know, out of any, I know that that was probably really good intention to protect citizens, but even if it was, even if the intention was to protect citizens, I, I feel very strongly that that should have been brought to our attention to then aid in having open government and open discussion. It did feel, it did feel like a bit of a slight, to be honest, especially because a citizen had to report it. And that, that's unfortunate. And, and then if we do take another week, again, I know formalities are important, um, this is, this is another week, I'm assuming, of loss for whoever can't attend, or are they just?
It's not open.
It's, yeah, December fourth, uh, Valentine's Day.
Okay.
So we will have one more meeting before.
Okay.
Uh, and, and it's a, it's a natural council.
Okay.
Morally formal votes are taken.
All right.
Does the council want staff to write up a motion for next? We're happy to do that.
Okay. Okay, uh, before we move on, any further discussion? Okay, we have, uh, Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple things here, first of all, it's for public safety pretty much, this has to be a question, what to consider it. When a cheat year came to town, he brought a couple people, volunteers from New York that did patrols in Chiola, looking for handicapped, that were in a police, unmarked police, a marked police vehicle. They look for handicapped zones that were being used by unmarked vehicles, so, let's not tag, leave notes in there, or leave citation there. Try to keep on those, watch favorite handicap people, and also check the parking lots, things that are going, they can then call, they can't issue a citation, because who's our parking lots? And with it, with the crimes increasing dramatically right now in our city, who's had someone last week parked their RV behind one of the buildings and behind Safeway, within a few minutes his cab and brew was stolen. I'm suggesting we might consider, like Felicity does in New York, they have, they have volunteers that work two-hour shifts. They have got sixty volunteers there, they put, they put thirty thousand dollars together, these people in yellow shirts, go around, and they currently, they help with blocked vehicles, they help with jump-starting cars, they file pushy ports, and walk them through, and are driving through the parking lots, up the subway. I think we need to do something about curtailed the ever-increasing deaths, not only in our city, but other cities are going on. Only have three to four officers on duty at a time, there is no way they're gonna be able to show us the parking lots and show, help things, things under control. That's, I'm just requesting, uh, probably work us, uh, they can talk about that, what we could do, and might be the issue with, we have a, I should press that, that way, too.
That's one, well, second, uh, when does the public safety community?
Uh, the date's next Tuesday.
Okay.
And I have a couple more, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, we also had talked about December, and then a little bit in January, right, downtown, all meeting. And I had requested that time we'd send out postcards, the same line was to be used for the recognition guide. That way our citizens know about coming up, so I'd like them to, if the mayor talks about that in the future, where it's absolutely, you get that going. Along with that, we, we talked about a retreat, there's no way we'd be done in March, all those times are, we're getting to a tight time crunch.
Yes.
So we need those things done and, and get our agenda, and else on the, the future agenda, it's not there.
Okay.
I like that, I, yes.
And you said you had a couple more, did you have?
That was the two things.
Oh.
Our retreat, downtown meeting.
I see.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Watson. Okay, um, any further discussion on, well, we talked about, or we're ready to move on from, Councilwoman's question? All right, Councilmember McQuinans?
Yeah, so I, uh, recently completed my term on the, um, nine-one-one. Uh, this, we're gonna rotate, now, fight, we'll take our seat for the small cities. Uh, during my tenure on the board, I was just learning how to be an elected official, and I, I don't want you, so there's a couple things I'd like to say real quick about nine-one-one. Uh, they do a lot of work, it's a lot of the.
They do a lot of work, it's a lot of important work they do, they do the management, they also service for county, the county, unincorporated county, concealed carry permits and firearm transfers, so there's a lot of work they do besides on somebody's worst day of their life. But they do do that job as well. And they just moved into a new facility, a facility appears to have been very successful on a timeline. They got done with some small overages, they are filing for compensation against the builders for being late. They're working through those issues, but they're up in their operational, and they're also moving to an idea right now, there is a difference between fire calls and law enforcement calls. And they're moving towards a universal call taking, and so, there's a lot of change there, they're doing a lot of things. Our biggest, two things that affects my mind is the fee they charge us, we pay a fee for that 911. So, they charge us a fee, so the fees are, a lot more money's gonna be coming into 911, and so, we need to be cognizant of that as our next term approaches, to be aware, I've asked you to kept it up with the finance committee actions, so we can watch how the money's coming in and how the allocations to cities are allocated. Some money is appropriate, a lot of money is probably not appropriate. They, other, the other issue, so how they charge us for the fee, that's for service, is one thing. The other thing is, is the radio service. So, as it turns out, because of how we got to where we are, that our radio system is not coincidence with our neighbors, right? So, it's hard for the police to get, to know that somewhere, luckily, something's going on there, because we're on a system with Milton and Charlotte. So, we, it's kind of an odd thing, and you would think Southside 911 would take ownership of that, but they are contending radios, their problems, they are about picking up the phone and coordinating the dispatch. But they have done a really good job of getting the Tacoma radio system and the county radio system to actually begin to work together and coordinate. There's supposedly what they call a bridge that should connect the two, but the bridge is not serving us at all. So, there is work to do there. I tried to represent us as best I could, but there's still work to do, unfortunately. But I think overall, the trajectory is fairly healthy, there's nothing harming, but we need to keep an eye on the budget, as always. Also, work with our, with the small cities around us, make sure we keep the radio, the radio problem needs to be the next problem to solve. They have a lot of problems between COVID, between building to building, between universal call taking, the radios are most on their list, now that should, that's all I have about Southside 911.
You have one question, you said fees, tax on fees or flat fee?
It's a, it's a fee, it's a flat fee, but it's based on, are you, there is a tax, yeah, there's actually a couple of taxes, right? And one of the taxes has explicitly to do with radios, which, you know, yeah, it's not Jason's, that's one word on planning.
We didn't have over a layer.
Yeah, I would like to point, yeah, I'd like to point, Jason, I don't know, there's, it's a kind of, it's a very complicated issue, because the radio taxes are, they are watched by the federal. And the Southside 911 kind of strong-armed the county into getting that lot of money either away from the county, back into Southside 911s by getting, by using the federal, the federal.
Those county people are so happy, but county seems to have quite a good organization, I'm sure.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem to be, still a bit ahead of me.
Well, yeah, we just, we just guided, we just guided the county, we took their money away, which means we took people, and that was, I oppose that move, but it was good that the county, that the county had its own responsibility. I mean, you think about Pierce County, based on what Councilman Evans said, you know, there's a lot of rural Pierce County out there that needs somebody looking out for them. I'm sorry, the guy out in, in Yellwood picks up the phone and needs, needs help, it means everybody's important, as the guy downtown Tacoma, and couldn't discriminate between those guys pretty quick either. So, that, but that's a hard problem, there's technological issues, there's financial issues, right now, as it is, all that's gonna be in one place, it's gonna be in Southside 911, and we need to keep the pressure on them to get our radio problem.
How do I get out of it?
Yeah, there is a King County 911, and that is bridge, and that is bridge. And, but the, the, yeah, the radio system, the real challenge here is, is that the Tacoma radio system is both for municipalities in high dense, high density areas, right? And Pierce County radio system is both for low density areas, and it costs money, the higher radios, it costs money, it's service, it's, it's a non-trivial, it is actually a sweet spot for me, because you radio, kind of what, what they do, and antennas and radios and stuff like that, so I understand the technical, the technical problems, and I get frustrated with.
Your art.
Yeah, your art, and you know, your art, you see, we're working, trying to make it straightforward. There's also a lot of legal things, because different tax sources, firemen, patients, and then just history, right? For me, there were a lot of little cities, now there's a 911, and it used to be a Southside 911. I was a member of the inaugural board, right? I mean, it transitioned over to that group. There's a lot of change going on, but I think all that's settling out, and by the time we get back on the, on the board, we can really make progress on it.
How is the radio wishing?
Okay. I'll take the nap. Well, the, the, that radio system is, it doesn't compensate for the noms, but it's designed for, it's a lower frequency, it's designed to go farther with less coverage, with less antennas, but we're on the municipal system, which is designed to go not quite as far with more antennas. Makes sense how we got there, because we got there because we transitioned to Yellwood and Yellwood's maybe, you know, their higher density, more antennas, right? Anyway, it's a complex problem, we're done for the next few years, and we'll be back on, I'm going to spur again, or if I actually comes up and I've asked them to keep me in the financial part of it, because that, that's gonna settle out. And like I said, there are too many things going on with the board to try to tackle everything at once, and I thought I'd let the council know.
Thank you, Councilmember Funt. Oh, to the mayor, a couple things, just thank you to Kelly for being on that board, being on your board, and kind of setting the tone on that whole thing, I think you did a fantastic job, and you. And then, you were talking about the two county difference, I'll just throw this out there, is that King County does things completely different than Pierce County. They have a whole bunch of different centers for 911, they're called ValleyCom, or they have King County, all these different places, which is kind of how this used to be, and usually, what I found is usually local control is better, smaller, easier to deal with. But the voters in Pierce County, a few years ago, went ahead and said, hey, we want to do this, because it kind of makes sense, is that, hey, we can put everything under one hat, you get rid of some of the administration of it, maybe it would cost less and everybody just bought it. As Councilmember Funt says, happily shown, that's not necessarily always the way it works. So, there are a ton of issues that you get there, I think it's a noble goal. But thank you again for sitting. Any other further open discussion before we move on to our motion discussion?
Is probably 911 there? The voters actually voted, I didn't, just kind of, there's a lot of votes, so there's a lot of facts that's sold, and much like I kind of compared to the individual, I remember Steve that testified in the last council meeting about all the issues that escaped and you never could figure out, he was actually talking to us, because we weren't a part of the deal, he was then on the sideline, and escaped the holiday for a very long period of time, FYI for all the council members, but listening to you was very accurate, what he was talking about. There's a very good example of a project that was sold very much one way and went very much the other way, and went to the business, ending around putting money in your pocket while they were running their deal. Tommies and ops soon developed, but that growth, you feel, through heating, it's a beautiful site, that's supposed to be a fair way, and that was shown to us for 20 years ago. It is what it is, honestly, you're putting all the trap, orange. Anyways, that wasn't even what I was gonna talk about. The recovery funds or what have you, we haven't know what status is, no one's infrastructure funding package, or that's ridiculous.
The ARPA funds, the American Urban Plan Act funds, will be, finance, chief financial officer, or I should say myself, will be meeting with the mayor for a list of, one of those crunches.
Yeah, 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 you know, listen to some AWC stuff, or the ones, or cities out there that have been a lot of good work on. Input on what to do with those monies, just kind of a note for the council members, that you can do, by priority, that, of course, in your context of what requirements are, of course, but it may not be as straightforward as you think to actually think about what you want to do, if there's a lot of responsibility. Well, that would be, but be very interesting. And that will, our lady and a bit of my main question I'll stick with tonight is about water rates, what we're doing for that, as my understanding would do. Okay, we wanted to do that, I don't know about, again, it might be one of those issues, or I don't know about context for rate study, because there is the council wanting to, because you, and go do a rate study with not much context, they're gonna do a racer, they're using, yeah, your, your base. But maybe with a little context in there that they're like, you know, and that probably goes a little bit with the, you know, you need to do some studying, because we have a really good model, that will, you know, water usage models, as you ever, you have all that data, where you can do some iterations of what, you know, if I do that, that's what happens, if I do that, that's what happens, right? I don't want to get to the point where we have a huge, our going back to us to say, this is why we have these water rates we have, because my idea of the water rates is eliminating a lot of the tiers, eliminating on the sewer side, the polyemetric thing, even though it is very diverse. And going to have a lifeline rate available for the lower income groups to be able to subscribe to, going to two-tier water rate for the water, you know, winter and current tiers. Those are the kind of things, I think that rate model, if you could pass those, what if, what if we did this, what if, what does it look like? We don't even, you know, I haven't seen what revenue looked like last year, you know, we projected all these things out, we had our old rate model, and we never, went back and said, well, how did that work out? Did you weigh over that, and weigh under that revenue? Those things I think we can do, but again, without the council, is the council actually looking at water rates in a really, I would almost suppose, basically, a kind of reboot of the water rates, and there should be a little committee, but the other in my mind is gonna work on that, I don't know, if I can hire the mayor and do, I have, after giving a hard time to see if, you have to jump over that now. But the water rates, we probably, maybe agree upon, that we should do something with theirs, good thing. And I think that, you know, the operational people in the field, the council members and staff, and everybody should be, you know, in some kind of a quick little strum, as you will, to go after that issue, hopefully, at some point. There, you know, we could form a, you can do, have hot committees in there, right? Get upwards of, you know, three council members and staff members and stuff like that, to go over the discussions.
I will.
So, something to think about there, because I would like, you know, you have to change the water, it's, it's all on the table, as far as I'm, I won't take anything off the table, because I'm in the vote, and I'm chasing that thing down, I mean, that's on my, that public safety is number one, and the water rates are, there's, there's big issues, there's huge issues, and you could literally, you know, if you can't be ratable with what, you know, we're doing, of your direction. Our water rate is so far off, which is not, water's kind of that example, sewer is really far off. If that's so far off, where we've been in the sewer business, really, would come down to, that gets really, fine, because all the value you steward plan from you for, you know, $100 million, you can fix your power plant. You can get it ugly, right? Because we don't have to run the sewer system, we can give it away, we don't have to run our water system. Can't run it in the market, in my mind, maybe we should, I know we can, because I'm confident that we can get there, unless the full council wants to, to do some things, you have taxes written in there, you know, I could go, obviously, we could go on about forever in this, but it's gonna hurt other things, there's, you know, it is a balance there, so, well, it is a point very well there. And hopefully, we'll agree, Mr. Mayor, that water rates and sewer rates need to be adjusted for ours, and we hope that in due soon.
I would love to be part of that, if we make a committee, I think that is.
We'll give you the sewer part, Congressman.
I'll take the sewer.
All right, any further open discussion before we move on to ING? Okay, we are moving on to ING, Madam Park, can you read it, Lee?
ING, which is A-B dash seven, discussion and action. Council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a letter extending the current local agreement for the administration of the 20th recreation program with the summer Bonny Bay School District through August 31st or 20th.
Go move. Question? Okay, do we have any discussion on this? Councilmember Evans?
Just like I discussed earlier, taking an action on a workshop, I would like to possibly see this. I know it was listed as an action item, but just because we can't have all the comments.
Yeah, yeah, correct, we had a conversation with the superintendent and assistant superintendent of the school district, their study session is next Monday to get on their board meeting of the 15th or 16th, so that's why we were suggested that be an action item tonight. So, that they would have our decision going into their board meeting.
And then, just some other discussion, I'm fine extending this, but I still don't have any answers to my questions on how we're going to run this better in this extended year. I understand that, you know, that's what the time is for, but I'm still not confident that, the five years we haven't done anything successful with it, that we're going to change that in the course of months without a plan, so.
Absolutely, that is a point well taken, and I believe that, that's one of the reasons why we're asking to extend it, so that we can get a, a committee together, so we can discuss this.
Yeah, and within that, I'd like to see some sort of responsibility on school district as well, that at some point in this discussion, we're talking about transitioning over, back to them, where they have the responsibility back on their plate, not necessarily us continuing to do this on a year from now to past, and we're in the exact same place, still running the same programs without the proper background checks, and not doing as well as the school district could have, and all we've done is wasted a year, so I'd like to see some sort of plan in there that can guarantee some of those. I'm gonna pass it, because I, this is a worthwhile thing, but I still want to make sure that we're doing right by the kids that are in this program, in this, program.
Absolutely, and I can comment on the fact that we have more than one party who is, including the city center that might be brought back into the fold on this. And to address council member Clance's commentary from the last week or four, we are looking at some private, well, private students. I can never say that word, privatization part of it. All right, so any further discussion on the item? All right, we are ready, oh, council member, you should go ahead and call.
Yeah, I have a question about, I know that when David was talking about just the revenue that they make, that they were deeply impacted by the restrictions that were put in place. I don't know that the restrictions in place, I don't know the district or whatever, I know it's, things are happening in public facilities such as schools. And so, I guess even if changes were to be made, if there are these restrictions in place where they have to have lower numbers and whatever other restrictions they have, doesn't that also impact their ability to have any level of revenue anyway? And I know that's a totally, that's a side thought, but it does make me wonder if those restrictions in place stop a lot of the residents from, or yes, I mean.
Well, the only commentary I can make on that is that it was couched as a redesign of the program that we are looking all this way. Okay, oh, council member Bolton.
I apologize, I'm kind of going back to our freedom resolution, but it's also about this Parks and Rec. Was, did I miss here that the Parks and Rec program has a vaccination mandate?
They're subject to the state mandate, that was enacted in August.
Or because of the school district?
Because they're working, or is it just working in school, something like?
Is that for every single one of the, because if these are city employees, then they should be subject to city law?
They're subject to the state mandate because they're working in childcare?
Okay, council member Bolton.
My question would then be, I know that the people that are working with the children have to do that under whatever is being handed down from up above, but my question is then, what about the clientele? Are they subject to that as well? Is there some sort of restrictions on them legally?
No, that is ours vaccination goes, no.
Okay, so is there a vaccine requirement for, is it just the people that work there then, or is it everyone?
It's just the employees who work in childcare.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any further commentary or discussion? All right, we are ready for a vote, this, I believe we have to have a full motion to vote, do we have any first and a second?
There's motion for a second.
Nice, thank you, all in favor of the extending our agreement with the, with the school district and the existing interrupter agreement that we have, say aye.
Aye.
We have any opposed? Okay, we'll be the passes. All right, item H, Matt Burton.
This is item H, which is for discussion only, our park bond is a future financial.
Yeah.
Council over discussion became item M.
All right, sir.
Okay.
Okay, would anybody like to start the discussion?
Oh, this is Iris, the CFO, we want to, uh, our...
Yeah, so you know, I'm having a really hard time hearing everyone tonight, so Jason and I actually have worked together on a lot of different parks funding issues, so what I can't hear or cover, I'm sure Jason can either answer or relay back to me. So we'll kind of tag team this, sorry to put that on you, Jason, but I'm having a hard time. So from what I did hear, I will be your used car salesman tonight, and I'm going to lead you towards the Toyota Corolla and not the Lamborghini, as you can afford it, so. I sent you guys a memo earlier, what's that?
What year is that Corolla? That's also a E.
Seventy-six.
Yeah, yeah, I did hear about the Lambo, so I just wanted to make sure you don't go looking at the Lambos. I sent you guys a memo, and I'm glad I did now, since it's really hard for me to hear you guys. These are a few of the options that you guys can consider when you're looking at a bond. Tonight, you had your meeting with the planning commission, I think Jason brought up some really great points about, you know, kind of coming up with your plan so we can figure out how much money is going to be needed for that plan and kind of do it all encompassing. And he also brought up the point about park impact fees, so that's another area that you guys can adjust. And council member Evans also brought up the commercial side of park impact fees, so that's another item you can add to that list.
So we can add to the list?
I'm sorry, if you repeat that in a grammar. Hey, council member, come on.
Yeah, thank you, Sherry, that was, that information was very good, and I appreciate that. Just to be clear about this is that I supported building the field by Allen York with the express intent, and when I voted for it, that we come before the people and offer the people the price tag for a Corolla. Right, right? And we, and we say, hey, this is what you get.
Why do you have to buy the...
Well, I would take a roll, there you can buy one. So what we really, what I, my whole, my whole point is that I, I really want to go ask the people, you know, and by ask the people, I mean, it's pretty clear that people in Bunny Lake vote. I would like to ask them and just say, this is the plan, this is how much it's gonna cost you. Because I have faith in citizens of Bunny Lake, right, I am one. I weigh up all of them on the freeway, all of the town, while we're commuting to work. And, yeah, and while we're sitting, we have a lot of good, holy time coming up, you like. We didn't know each other that way, so anyway. That'd be crazy, who wants to sit in that traffic?
All those or you guys?
Sorry. So anyway, I support, I really want to put a bond issue to the voter. But I feel that it will be a very good way to communicate and historically mark the fact that we have a plan, we have a price tag, we work hard to sell it, I can get behind it. Because if that doesn't pass, then we can look at other mechanisms that are less direct and not, that, and are definitely taxes, because it's very clear, the city is, nobody's gonna give the city money back somewhere.
Okay, you want to...
Yeah, there's an opportunity, we may have some of that one, some of ours of that one.
Right.
And so, we just, yeah, so we need, we need some source of funding, we need a plan, want the people to pay for it. I want to go ask the people so that when they say no, I then may be able to get behind the Metropolitan Park.
Okay, wait, wait, wait.
To be clear, to be clear, council member Clance, the Parks District is also a vote of the people, so...
Well, to be clear, it's...
The Parks...
For the vote for taxing higher than the threshold for the vote for... Also, Park District becomes a windfall for Miss Halle because the Park District becomes a separate taxing authority, and all of a sudden, the property can be ceded to the Park District, and they can, they will have the tax to maintain and pay for Park. So there's, there's no doubt. So I, I have a lot of experience with the whole Park District, as it turns out, and just so everybody knows, just to get the history straight, I was one of the five families that vehemently opposed Metropolitan Park in 2013. Not because it's a bad idea, but because it is a sneaky tax. And why'd you say legislature created that law to make it a sneaky tax? Because it doesn't have the same threshold that a bond would have. We put a bond out for a vote, and 50 people showed up, and all 50 people voted for that bond, and Bunny Lake wouldn't be authorized. We didn't get enough people to vote for it, have to get a certain threshold of registered voters, and then out of that, you have to get this E1%. Right, and MPD, if I have 50 people show up, and 26 of them vote for that MPD, I now have a taxing authority. That's a big difference in threshold, and that's a sneaky part of the tax that I didn't appreciate. I, but on the other hand, Parks are important, people are important, citizens are important, I want to figure a way to serve them. I would first rather just come at them straightforward and try to sell it and say, well, this is what it really takes, this is the money you guys spend, or maybe go to Costco, or, um, Fairground, or, you know. Anyway, that's why I want a park bond, and that's why I want it on the ballot, is so that then I think the council with integrity can say, I have a plan, we asked for the taxes, now we have to go buying alternative finance, that's where the point is.
Yeah, so then that's where we bring Jason in, which is what he was discussing earlier tonight on giving us the master plan, that way by taking the money from the midtown or whatever to create the big picture, so that we know where we want to go, that way we also know how much it's gonna cost. And we're not going, oh, well, maybe we want, you know, $10 million, and then come back and go, oh, we actually $30 million, so we have to expand that bond. So we say, okay, we've got the big picture, here's how much this is gonna cost. So this is how much we want to make this bond for, and I think if we have a start date and an end date that allows us to collect the money that we need, then they would be more apt to vote for it if we say this stops on this day, you know, whether we finish everything or not.
That's where Watson.
I would agree with the bond because that's the only point it's gonna take to make it work out. House motion, council, not forget about the DNO tax, we talked about for businesses, if we let that, it's not gonna get the money we need, it'll give us additional funding for us that way, and with all the businesses growing in Easttown, new ones coming, with our growing city, we've got more businesses coming here than we ever did 10 years ago. Opportunity for us to get a humor fund to help pay, take, pay for our facilities and stuff that way, so those two are important.
Okay, council member Evans?
So I always feel like a broken record because I'm bringing out the same thing, oh, we've got new people here, so maybe, maybe someone's gotta see. The DNO tax is not great, 2020 would ride in $13,000, 2019, $12,000, 2018, $15,000.
Better than nothing.
Taxing our people extra money for what amounts, what amounts to less than a John Deere tractor, right, doesn't really cover the bill. The memo that Sherry sent out earlier today, she had a few options on here, general fund, any balance transfer, that, I mean, that not even made it in our park line. Better Parks District, just like what council member Clance said, that's, that's a little sneaky there. DNO tax isn't gonna cover the cost of just the overhead to run it. REIT, right now, 50% is on the street fund, 35 to Park and 15 to General. That 35% into, onto three or two, which is the Parks budget. And 2021, 2022 is projected at 360,000, projected into the general fund in those two years is 192, 95. So altogether, we're talking, obviously, we're talking less than $600,000 if we split 50/50 streets and Parks. So even that's getting somewhere, better than 13,000, but it still doesn't cover everything. We've got a councilmatic bond, but we have no revenues to cover that. Based on the, the master plan shows, we've got BMX facility, the parking lot, restroom, mountain bike trails, Onmore Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four, potential Veterans Memorial, Dog Park, Fennel Creek, which is still over $7 million on, a potential bridge over Baker Falls, which I don't know why we do that. Just our known project costs are over $30 million, and that's without Midtown, which is estimated for the comp plan at $10 million, and that was five years ago or eight years ago. Easttown Park, a sports complex, altogether, we have nearly $16 million in parks for our comp plan that we need to do. In order to do that, there's no possible way of stealing all the refund, all the DNO tax, doing a councilmatic bond. We can increase the park impact fees to the suggested, what's in the comp plan, which is over $10,000 or $12,000. I don't want to do that either, but every house that we sell, we're undercutting our park fund by 60%. We have the possibility of the commercial park impact fee, where we might be able to make up some money on that. And then we also have an option of asking undeveloped plans, getting some credits from PCR to develop out areas that aren't necessarily part of our plan, which they won't say yes to, so we can get a park impact fee from that. As Jason pointed out, 1,300 homes times $4,500 per home, whatever it is for our park impact fee, doesn't equate to $50 or $60 million, it barely, that is $10 million, so there are some out of the box options. That would be potentially leasing out to someone, a private company or private individual, Midtown Park for a dollar a year for 20 years, let them build, develop profit off of the rentals from Midtown Park. At the end of that 20 years, the park comes back into the city's maintenance operation, comes back into us. We have a fully developed season park that costs us nothing, in fact, we made $20 off of it. And then, and then we, we have money set aside in our capital improvement fund, we're not building that out to upgrade some other parks, do some maintenance. If we did, if we took 50% of the refund, plus our park impact fee, which is estimated at about $175,000 a year, that's about $725,000 going into our park capital improvement fund, that's it. $725,000 is 75 years to cover, 8 years to cover that $50 million, so that's not gonna work. And even if we took out a 20-year bond on that, that $725,000 going towards our bond fee covers roughly $7.5 to $10 million, which still is only 20% of what it is. So we've got to stop thinking inside of the box here and start looking at the major ways of doing it. There's just no way of covering all these costs, and that's why I said, you know, doing this whole park thing, we already know what the costs are, that $60 million was estimated seven or eight years ago, so it's not cheaper. So unless we know how to fund it, knowing what we're gonna do is irrelevant. You know, that's, that's the car shop, you would have a job, that's what we're doing right now, and I think we need to... Yeah, I get the idea of adding the whole plan because if we do have to present it to someone or someone takes it over, they have the opportunity to say, this is what the plan is, but the people aren't gonna vote 60% to take this on. And I wouldn't really want to do the, the other type of on the Metro Parks, because that same short term...
I would've killed him.
I was against it before, I was like, man. Yeah, Jason.
And I, that's one important part of the park management. The line of, that $60 million you put in there that we're talking about right now is based on this Lamborghini approach to parks planning. So as I said, building a pure synthetic field for Wolf Bank Sports with parking lot is a...
is a significant and more expensive project than a playground and a grass field. Right? Like the costs are astronomically different. And so you're absolutely correct, Councilmember, is that knowing what we're going to buy is, is important. But we also have the lever of changing the project. So we could get rid of having five sports fields at Allen York Park and wanting to do five sports fields out at Midtown Park and not doing the East Town Park because we don't, aren't doing residential out there anymore, which was what we thought we were going to be doing in twenty fifteen because we've done the industrial development. So that's probably an out of the box, that's the, the fourth lever of this is the changing the projects that are in it. And then also, once you know that, we have a better knowledge of what are the opportunities we have. So that's a, another funding source. I mean, the Fennel Creek Trail is getting built by, I guess, a lot of city money, but there's also almost three million dollars of grant funding that we got through PSRC and state. So that's why I think having that discussion of what do you want to spend and what you can afford, but also what you want to build. Is there, that's the thing is that you can't, you can't pull one lever without the other. And I think that's been the problem that we've had with our park planning is we either talk about what we want to build and not cost, or we talk about cost, not what we want to build. And then when we find out that we're going to go. That's, that's the discussion I think that the council, planning commission, parks.
I thought you said you never thought that.
You start, you start relating projects list, you know, you go back and think.
Yes.
So, so the way you, in my mind, the way you kind of get these numbers kind of leveraging together is here is the, we know, we know the Lamborghini projects that we have on the list right now are not going to work. So then we begin, why do we know that?
I have a picture of, what does it cost me when I pull up my voter and I say, I have a sixty million dollar bond.
Glad you asked. Well, if a sixty million dollar bond is based on the, the max that you can bond, which is seventy-five cents per thousand, that's.
Is that what's on the board of the voter bond?
Well, well, on, on the metro park side, on the metro park side, it's maxed out at seventy-five cents per thousand. And based on another email Sherri sent, uh, what our, our assessed value was, like four point one million, something like that, which is four point one million thousand.
No, I want to talk about homeowners, we want to talk about homeowners. Mr. Rhyb, I'm looking at five hundred thousand.
Seventy-five cents per thousand, that's, uh, that's. And that's the max, but that, that still only generates a hair over three million in, in a park district. So with three million though, you can bond, um, you can bond anywhere between fifteen and twenty-nine as a revenue source. So, you know, a, a metro park district wouldn't be something you would manage, but that would be, be over twenty years, still only getting twenty million dollars on.
Additional, that's stupid. Five hundred thousand dollars times seventy-five cents.
No, five hundred times seventy-five cents.
Yeah, you're a hundred and.
Four hundred and twenty-five bucks a year?
Yeah. You said. That's all right.
And you've got thirty-seven hundred bucks a year.
Forty-seven?
Yeah.
No.
Is it seventy-five cents per hundred, per, per hundred thousand or per thousand?
Per thousand, yes.
It'd be three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I got it. Decimal points are important. But I would say part of the problem with the park plan is in Allen York Park, you'd have projects. In Midtown Park, you'd have, we think it could be seven million dollars, but we don't know where to build.
Oh, we need a plan, I was just worried that you. If you're going to get this. Right, you need your other thing?
Yeah, you've got grants, you've got, I mean, and I would say two of the other things for the metropolitan parks district doesn't necessarily mean the council's not in charge. When the council sets up a metropolitan parks district, they can set up if the council members are the district.
I mean, now.
So.
But you can't be elected to that.
No, we, 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 as a council member. Metropolitan parks, that's how we contract, that's how a lot of cities also do their charter patient.
Yeah, taxation without.
Well, no, it is, it depends, like I said, the council member serves on public, on, on both people. It's a, it's a, it's a philosophical question and a policy question of both my level, you say, both options are available.
Yeah, I mean, I, ideally, you know, if had someone in, in city or, you know, I don't know how much you would take to privately build out Midtown, but I'm guessing a fraction of the cost of what it would take publicly. And anyways, and if we were able to, to do, I don't know if that's, if it's legally, if we're able to lease the property and let them do something. Um, and then take it back over to something we've been discussing with the Veterans Committee is uh, Veterans Committee is going to build the memorial or hopefully fund the memorial and then turn that over to the city in its operations. I don't know how that would work with a park, but it, it's going to have to be that kind of thinking because we've been undercutting ourselves for so long on this park impact fee. And don't get me wrong, ten or twelve thousand dollars is a ridiculous amount to pay. But, and that was what was set up to cover all those costs in the concrete plan. So math is math and, and if it says it's going to be sixty million to build this out, we figured out what our inventory was and divided that out, that could have been to cover those costs, but that's not what we were charging because that seems unfair to do, but there was no other mechanism. Sort of a, a commercial, I don't know what a commercial uh, park impact fee would look like. Um, and we've got potentially build that going on in East Town over the next few years that might contribute. But even if that was ten percent, that's a ridiculous amount to pay, that's still only ten million dollars. So, you know, to get to sixty, we, we, there's a lot of things that have to fall in place. And, and I think if we do the, the parks plan, we're going to find that it's going to be probably more than sixty in just today's environment.
And it depends on the projects that go in.
Yeah.
And it's, I mean, think about it, just one ball field in Allen York Park, we're into it, what, seven million dollars? That, but you can build a lot of playgrounds and grass fields for seven million dollars. So that, that's what I'm saying is, is the, the, the plans, the projects that are here that got to the sixty million dollars are these projects. That, that's a policy question, do we want to continue with these, especially these policy, these types of projects? Because you can easily pull those off some of them and start to lower that cost. So you, I think you've got multiple levels there in your.
Well, if, if I could, I mean, I, and I think Jason's going down the right path here. The whole point of this, is one of the big planning effort is to go back and see if these are even the right projects to build for Bonnie Lake now. I mean, have, have the citizens had a chance to weigh in on this issue now compared to ten years ago or whatever? We're beginning here and, and we still just broke ground on this. But then for some, that's what I'm saying, thirteen million dollars behind budget on this, so.
You don't have to convince me that, that the plan for Allen York Park that's shown there, I, not.
We can't even do this. We all, we all agree to this and we can't even do vote parking because it's in, it's in small land.
And there are a lot of issues, I think, with that plan that in retrospect, I think we could have done differently. Um.
The other point, sorry, Jason, the other, the other point here that I want to make sure is clear is that the set, the plan also gives us time to write sides this for our. And I think that's a big part of what's missing with that, um, park plan. It's, it's, it's a great plan, but I really have serious questions about the infrastructure able to serve it, just the road network itself. We were out there looking at parking today. It's a dead end.
Yeah.
And so the, the, the planning effort gives us a chance to really evaluate citywide. Do these improvements, not only are these the improvements that we want to do or question whether they are or not, but is it located at the right place? And I think before you can even start talking about money and cost and how you fund it, you've got to know what you would potentially be spending money on.
Well, I, I, and I believe it'd be the complete opposite. If we come together and say, all right, our funding source is X, Y, and Z, that's going to generate thirty million dollars. We've got three parks to fund, we want to spend ten, ten, and ten, we want to do twelve, eight, nine, so. And, and then from there, we can break down how much we can do at that because then we can say, all right, well, we're going to spend twelve million here. Uh, this, this and this are completely off the table. That leaves uh, playgrounds, uh, walking trails and, you know, and fitness tap. So I, I think we have to know what we're going to spend so we can scale that project accordingly.
I got it.
I need to start.
But, but the people aren't going to say, you're not going to say, well, you had this amount, right? Not like we're selling crappy paper at school and get, get to the pit from the higher level. The people are going to want a pool, they're going to want tall ball fields or consorts. They're going to want all of this stuff.
Well, okay, my council member Paul wants to make.
I apologize.
Um, what a great idea. I, the, the one where we lease it. That is such a great idea. I think, um, anytime the government tries to build things and make things, uh, it's overpriced and it takes too long. And then we attempt to access this again and again. I know that there was uh, something on the ballot at one point where, you know, Bonnie Lake was asking for money from us and uh, it was voted down. And so.
The Metro Park.
Yes, okay, yeah, it was, okay, okay. Um, and so I guess, uh, just a comment for um, Allen York, just as a, a citizen of Bonnie Lake. Um, I do not like going to Allen York and uh, I think a, a lot of people share that same sentiment as far as traffic. Um, there's just a lot of, um, it's not somewhere I want my little kids to be. There's a lot of uh, you know, monkey action going on over at Snatch Shack and things like that that I've never been able to pay it up. Um, I think with the Midtown uh, ball fields, great idea. It is such a great idea. And I think um, it gives an opportunity to where, when I've talked to some people in Bonnie Lake, they've asked me, well, where's Midtown? And I described to them where it is because I think the citizens aren't, aren't fully aware of even this, this plan that we have that, oh, hey, we like ball fields out there. Uh, when I tell people where it's located, uh, they do have some concern because they think it's, well, it's, it's, yeah, it.
It's a broken window.
It feels a little unsafe over there. Yeah, and so I, I, that's one of the things that I've talked about. That building ball field out there, that area. I think your idea is, is a great idea. I think the other concern I have too is, and I know this is everybody's question, I mean, even the guy who's upstairs with the, you know, talking about Talley. Um, uh, is there any way that we can get money from them? I, and, and the reason being is, is Talley residents are, I know, over there, right? Um, and they are in Pierce County, but they come to do everything in Bonnie Lake.
They, they, they did a lot in traffic impact fees, they, they, they did the whole new life over at Fortin. And then, I mean, the majority of their money is spent in towns with their sales, our sales tax, I have, I have a great, I mean, direct.
Yeah.
Okay, I hear a lull, is there any more discussion?
I, I go back to what I've said for years, you all know that Midtown's a, so, should develop that. Need to start doing something over there, get a plan together. And then if we can get a private individual to develop for us and lease it for one dollar a year, then my, I'm all favor. Because although I've rented here for years to figure it out, I'm going to get done. And I've even talked before, having Fred Myers be a part of it, having their name on it and having Walmart. That's the same type of principle. But at least you have somebody else running it, making money out of operating it. Like new affiliate field, they charge us, they charge us, they have a little breakdown and stuff, but with that, we should get that over there too, so why not? Why agreeable?
I have a kind of silly question, probably going to laugh at me, but I was wondering like, can we vote on maybe like, you know, how we're paying eight cents for these bags, someone go to the grocery store? How about like a half a penny on every single purchase that people vote on? And that's the sales tax, no, sales tax of every single person that.
Yeah, that's the VNO tax on our city. Business operation tax on our city, that's exactly.
Could be, I don't know, there'd be an actual one, thank you, Council.
Pierce County does one cent for the zoo.
I guess, that's some kind of taxing authority, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, because there's some zoo track authority.
I just hope it wasn't that kind of. Actually, that's the bill that's in the legislature right now. There's a bill in the legislature that allows cities to put out votes to the public. You have point one percent, so if we figure that out, we mad did that probably, point one percent sales tax to fund park improvements and park issues, for park improvements. I don't know, I don't know what one percent of our sales tax, point one percent of our sales tax would be.
It would be sixty-five hundred dollars.
Eighteen dollars.
No, I mean, twenty twenty, uh, twenty-two percent sales tax within thirteen thousand, so a point one half of that. And that's not a good plan.
So I think that's a good plan, right? I mean, I'm, I'm sitting here and I think Justin has, that, you know, the plan to me sounds like this. Figure out how much money we have, look for a private uh, venture to help us. Uh, and have an entire park plan that includes Midtown, Allen York, trails. Um, that, that sounds like the plan, I mean, you need to work on, you don't need to say, this is what we want to build, you need to say, how much can we build? And this is it, and then go look at, um, you know, that's part of the bond, the whole bond thing is go with the citizens. How much are you willing to pay? And then we also go to the businesses and say, going to help, right? And we turn to, you know, all the construction out in East Town and say, how much we get from there? Now we know how much we can do. If we just do that and we build a plan and we can execute to, is that, that's a win for the citizens because they're going to get something in a, in a given time. And I, I do think Justin's right, I mean, if we, if we find a way to let the private industry do this without as, as many encumbrances as civil government has, then we probably will get more. Right? But that's, that's, it's also a thought that everyone has to be wise about. You know, but that's the plan. I, I like that plan, I, I can get behind it. And then if that blows up on us, then I can support Metropolitan.
There's a question about what? This is funny. A plan because there's a lot of things, you know, that we're talking about. There's a lot of room there and there's going to be people, you're going to have to establish, you know, the people. Yeah, they can get trails and open space, but the city council, citizens want to see in future ball fields, whatever it is, the ice skating rink or school or whatever it is. And I'm not, kind of ironic, I feel that, you know, there's a lot of activity in this area and in reality, I'm thinking about the veterans, artists want to be felt out here and think, two months, council will be in case we're alive and citizens need other partners. Just.
Okay, I believe everything has been thoroughly discussed, it is a school plan. Do we have any further discussion?
I want to just put a question, I'm just, I know you all know the whole deal of it. Is there any concern of potentially going that route, leasing it out to a private individual, public lands?
I'm not really sure I can answer that question in the vacuum just because there's so many factors that go there on that question.
Okay.
I always have a question with the, who would you get to do that and is there a market for that?
I can, yeah. That seems like it's a great idea, you know.
They could just all ask the potential out, they could make their investment back plus some and put it for them, put it for the city and doesn't cost a crap to carry it in.
And there are, you know, of course, always, trying to have vast sums of money that helps you with them currently. Like you want to buy names.
That's Walpers in Midtown Park.
I was tired. I was smiling.
Just no, you know. Okay, do we have any further business? And we don't have an executive session, so I am moving to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
All right, meeting adjourned.